The meeting for Liverpool City Council on the twentieth of November two thousand and twenty-four officially open and welcome everyone here. In accordance with clause five point three four of council's code of meeting practice, I inform the person attending this meeting that A, the meeting is being recorded, livestreamed and made publicly available on council's website and B, persons attending the meeting should refrain from making any defermentary statements. Ladies and gentlemen, to start our meeting today, I would like to invite Father Paul Moncrief from All Saints Catholic Church, who will read the acknowledgement of country, the affirmation and offer a prayer for council, followed by the national anthem. Could I invite Father Paul, please, and ask everyone to please stand?
Before we begin proceedings, we would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and their ancestors, past and present. The Cabralgul clan of the Darug nation. I also acknowledge that this land was accessed by peoples of the Durrwaw and Darug nations. Affirmation of the council. We affirm our hope and dedication to the good government of our city and the well-being of all of Liverpool's residents, no matter their race or creed. Today, we affirm our hope for sound decision-making by the council, which will improve the quality of life in our city. We express our expectations and best wishes for Australia, our nation's future, the mayor, councillors and staff of council and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. And our prayer before this Liverpool council meeting. The author of the biblical letter of St James writes, and I quote, "You must understand this, my friends. Let everyone be quick to listen, slow to anger, for your anger does not produce God's righteousness." Almighty God, we gather in a spirit of gratitude for the many gifts in our city, especially our people. May our civic leaders gathered here recognise and encourage the great efforts of so many. May they work together to enable citizens to fulfil their aspirations, develop individual, family and group potential and hence contribute to the building up of our communities and city. May they support those who are struggling or new to our area by lessening anxieties wherever possible and providing new or renewed opportunities. Notwithstanding their different perspectives, may they conduct council business in a spirit of mutual respect and shared commitment to the common good. May their service be humble, relevant, generous and honest. May they inspire unity in the diversity of interests in our city by the way they manage diversity among themselves. May they receive encouragement for their efforts and find creative balance between public service, professional demands and personal and family needs. May their efforts enable substantial benefits for Liverpool and the South West of Sydney. In God's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Everyone, please be seated. And thank you very much, Father Paul, for your kind words. And can we say on behalf of all of us here at Liverpool City Council, we'd like to wish you a very Merry Christmas and to all in your congregation. There are no councillors attending remotely. There are no apologies. We now move to condolences. Condolences, please. Thank you. Condolences. So unfortunately, we have one condolence motion today. And on behalf of Liverpool City Council, I'd like to express our deepest condolences on the passing of Elizabeth Reel on the ninth of October two thousand and twenty-four. Elizabeth was an integral member of the Liverpool council team for over twenty-one years, commencing her journey with us in January two thousand and three as a customer service officer. She later transitions to procurement in August two thousand and four, where her dedication, professionalism and positivity left a lasting impression on her colleagues and the organisation. Born in the Philippines as a sixth of seven children, Elizabeth's upbringing instilled in her a strong work ethic. She excelled academically, graduating to the top of her class and achieving qualification as a certified public accountant. In nineteen eighty-two, she married her husband and together they built a beautiful family. The Reel family immigrated to Australia in two thousand and two, making Liverpool their home and enriching our community with their presence and contributions. Elizabeth's commitment to her work was matched only by her devotion to her family and faith. Known as Bessie to her friends, Mom to her children and Omar to her grandchildren, she was a pillar of love and support to all who knew her. Elizabeth survived by her husband, her three daughters, her two grandsons and her extended family. Council acknowledges Elizabeth's outstanding contributions to Liverpool City Council and Liverpool community. Her legacy of kindness, dedication and excellence will not be forgotten. We extend our heartfelt sympathies to Elizabeth's family, friends and colleagues during this difficult time. May her memory serve as a source of comfort and strength to those who loved her. Rest in peace, Elizabeth. And can I move that we have a one-minute silence, please? Second councillor Green, all in favour, please stand. Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Next item is declarations of interest. Does anybody have any declarations? Councillor Hall, Deputy Mayor?
Yes, I have. Config O four. Awards, I'll be leaving the meeting.
Can you just state?
It's a conflict of interest. I'm one of the candidates.
Is it?
In the award.
Procurnary?
Non-procurnary.
Significant, less significant?
It is significant.
Significant and you'll be leaving the chamber? Significant because you know one of the people?
Yes.
Do you have a form there? Give one to you.
I also have a conflict in Config four as well. It's non-procurnary, less than significant. I know one of the successful nomination nominees, sorry.
And you'll be, actually, you'll be taking councillor?
I will leave the chamber.
Thank you. So non-procurnary, less significant because you know the person and you'll be leaving the chamber? Thank you. Are there any other? Further conflicts? No? Next item is a confirmation of the amendments of the previous meeting held on the sixteenth of October, as well as the extra accounts really held on the twelfth of November.
There's a mistake in the minutes of the sixteenth of October in relation to councillor nominations for committees. On the Liverpool Sports Committee, I should not be there. If that could be amended, please.
But you're happy to move the minutes otherwise?
Yes.
Great. Move councillor Green. Do we have a seconder? Second councillor Moon. If I can please make that amendment? Would you like the details of the mistake? Are you guys all right? Yeah, just so they can write it down, please. Just make sure that it's on the screen. Great. Any further discussion? If not, I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, I declare that unanimous. Next up, we have presentations and speak and then followed by presentations and today there are three of them. The first one, I would like to invite Ms Farida Hadeen, Ms Faiza Al-Habub and Zainah Sahwali to address council on Liverpool Youth Council, HSC tutoring. The first one is regarding the Office of Local Government's review of the councillor conduct framework. The Office of Local Government is completing a comprehensive review of the councillor conduct framework, proposing updates to promote accountability, transparency and integrity across New South Wales councils. These recommendations cover critical areas, including clearer behavioural standards, a refined dispute resolution and penalty framework and measures to restore professionalism in council meetings. Liverpool City's council endorsement of these changes reflect our commitment to governance excellence and public trust. The key recommendations being considered are, number one, change the code of conduct and oath of office. Enhance code of conduct requirements. The OLG proposes aligning council conduct with the parliamentary standards, establishing clear behavioural expectations. Updates to the oath of office will further reinforce council's commitment to ethical public service. Two, changes to the definitions and assessment of council behaviour. Clear behavioural definitions, revised definition proposed to address significant conduct issues and reduce minor complaints focusing the complaints process on substantive matters. Stricter regulations for property developers and real estate agents. The OLG recommends stricter standards for councillors with ties to property development or real estate to address potential conflicts of interest, ensuring impartial decision-making. Addressing inappropriate lobbying. The OLG proposes guidelines to address inappropriate lobbying, ensuring councillors engage with stakeholders transparently and avoid undue influence that could impact council decisions. Three, changes to dispute resolution and penalty framework. Statewide peer panel for behavioural issues. A statewide panel of experienced councillors would handle behaviour-related complaints, providing a fair and peer-reviewed oversight mechanism. Centralised conflict of interest management. The OLG recommends managing significant conflicts of interest at a state level, applying a structured penalty system to ensure consistency across councils. Referral of significant sanctions. For serious breaches, the OLG proposes that significant sanctions be referred to an appropriate independent tribunal or body, ensuring that higher-level penalties are reviewed and administered by an impartial authority. Four, restoring dignity to council meetings. Increase transparency and order in meetings. The OLG recommends empowering mayors to address disruptions by imposing sanctions to ensure respect and order within council proceedings. Banning closed-door councillor sessions. To improve transparency, the OLG suggests banning private councillor briefings, ensuring all council liberations remain accessible to the public and fostering community trust. These recommendations represent essential reforms aimed at upholding integrity, transparency and accountability in local councils across New South Wales. By supporting these changes, Liverpool City Council demonstrates its commitment to the highest standards of governance and professional conduct in serving our community. And I would like to move that council, one, formally endorses each recommendation in the OLG's review of the councillor conduct framework, recognising these changes as essential for maintaining and enhancing public trust in local government. Two, makes submission to the OLG outlining its formal endorsement in support of the proposed framework. Three, in its submission advocates for the New South Wales government to consider adopting a similar conduct framework at the state level, ensuring consistency and reinforcing public confidence in governance across all tiers. Four, directs the acting CEO to submit Liverpool City Council endorsement by the OLG specified deadline, and there are two points, sorry, counts that weren't written. Number five, immediately implement open-door briefing sessions. And six, write to the minister expressing our support. Any discussion? Councillor Green?
Yes. Taking on note that there's currently consultation occurring at the moment, these are recommendations. I'm just wondering if it might be a bit premature to, for us as councillors, because we've not had a conversation or briefing together as to what aspects of the recommendations are, you know, are fine or which are the ones that we might wish to argue that need to be further refined. So while the recommendations at the moment are being just consulted with across the whole sector, I'm just wondering if it's a bit premature to be saying that we will formally endorse each recommendation when we haven't as a councillor body had an opportunity to even discuss it amongst ourselves, you know, amongst ourselves as to, or any other ideas that we may have that would further refine or enhance the recommendations that the OLG has put on the table.
Yes, thank you councillor. Now, any other? Speakers for or against? Did you want to say something?
Just one bit clear. I am not against integrity, accountability and transparency. It's how I have always operated throughout my career. But I'm just saying that I think it would be great if we could have a discussion. I just think it's a bit premature. That's all. It's, yeah.
Well, I guess that's why I put it forward, because the, so just on that note, councillor Green, this was sent out to us by the head of governance, I think, on October twenty-second. And the deadline, I think, was last Friday, but it has been extended from my understanding. So I guess this is the time to discuss it. And if you look at the spirit of what the Minister for Local Government, Mr Ron Honing, the member for Heffron, has been indicating both in the media and as well at the Local Government Conference, that he's very strongly viewed that those discussions, they would like to happen and they want them to happen in public. So I guess there's no better time to discuss it than now, according to the standards that the minister would like set.
While I understand in terms of the reasoning as to why briefing sessions maybe could be open to the public, I think it's personally, from my own opinion and my own perspective, I believe that the briefing sessions, sorry, excuse me, is an opportunity for councillors to ask frank questions and to receive frank advice. To be able to do that, in my experience, is where there is an environment of trust and honesty is present. How, what, open as in what does it actually mean? Is it open as in a council meeting? Is it open as in a recording and then that's put online and people can view it? I have some reservations that sometimes people may hear something and reinterpret and before you know it, it's out on public, on social media that could be completely misinterpreted, misinformation and then you're running, then councillors have been put in a position of then having to put out fires. So I'm not completely on board and I understand across the sector, the local government sector with other councillors in other councils expressing similar kinds of reservations. So I guess that in part of the discussion and being, you know, putting it out there, that's what I would be concerned about. Other areas of the recommendations, I feel are quite reasonable and as a way of tightening it up, it's probably long overdue. But having said that, to have had a conversation together, I think would be important.
Thank you councillor Green. Councillor McNaught?
I just have a question. Is there any other council that is having open briefing sessions at this point? I don't know of any. I'm just asking if there are any.
I personally am not aware of anyone, although I see of.
From like a surveying generally across the OLG conference, this is brand-new territory, so no, not to our knowledge.
And can I say, and I think Liverpool council was the first council to introduce the independent hearing and assessment panels back in many, many years ago, so great opportunity to be the first if there is no one else doing it. And I think councillor Green, you know, the prerequisite I imagine would be that with regard to where they would happen, how they would happen, from my understanding, we can either hold them here in the council chambers or we can do it in the boardroom, because the boardroom does have, on level eleven, does have seating for members of the public if they wanted to attend. So I think there is room for them there. So that could be a potential, or we could just hold it in here and just livestream it as we do this meeting. Deputy Mayor?
Yes. I do have some issues with some of these suggestions. Banning closed-door council sessions. It's all very well to say, let's have open councillor sessions and not have the privilege that state and federal parliament has. And while we may have debates or discussions in briefing sessions amongst ourselves, I would be hesitant to be able to do the same thing in a public forum. And as I say, we do not have the protection and quite often you may have information that may not be a hundred percent reliable, but you can't ask questions because of the fear of being challenged over the issue and and legal action taken against you. And this is why in parliament you have that privilege of being able to say things without fear. And I mean, there are restrictions, but the point is they are far more liberties than we have in council. So having closed briefing sessions, particularly when you're discussing issues that may give somebody outside of council an advantage, a monetary advantage, you can't discuss those in open sessions, simply because of that issue. So I do have some issues with some of these. I did read through all the recommendations and I have some doubts as to whether I would support some of those. This is just my point of view.
Just on that point, Deputy Mayor, you raise a very valid point. The part of the act which allows councillor to go into closed session, subject to the usual provisions of whether staff confidentiality or commercial venture, would still apply. So that would not be done with. So we'd still have that opportunity to do so.
Mister Mayor, as a suggestion, or what we might consider in terms of the briefing sessions is that the minutes, you know, that probably constituted minutes be kept on or generated at the briefing session and they can be released publicly as maybe we would do, but probably with a little bit more information than the governance committee meeting. So then people get an idea about the topic or the issue or item that has been discussed. And that might be very useful then if somebody wished to avail themselves of making a presentation to council if it's a, it's clearly a councillor briefing is an issue that's coming to council. So that would give people an opportunity to say, well, I'm interested in that. I've got another point of view to be able to come. That I don't see a problem with. But my concern is that, you know, in terms, as I say, with people that maybe here, you know, can interpret something that is not particularly is not factual and then it ends up on social media and it's a storm out there that we can do without. It's like going forth into areas where angels fear to tread.
Indeed. Thank you. Councillor McNaught?
Yeah, look, this is great discussion and again, like all of us, all for transparency, but I taken back to when the minister was questioned on this at the conference recently on the weekend and he was very keen for, you know, public briefing sessions. So I feel like that's the way that we're going. You know, having listened to his response to that question, others, they may have interpreted it a different way, but I was quite certain that is what he wanted.
Because the only time I guess where there's an open briefing session is with estimates. And that's completely different. So, yeah.
Hence councillor Green, point three. Yeah, because I'm sure we'd look forward to seeing when the minister gets briefed by his department. I think it would be great to tune into that. Yeah, but yes, apparently his comments on one of his interviews was that's executive government. So apparently they're a little bit different than us, but, but yeah. Is there any further discussion?
I'll just to the chair.
Yes, councillor AJ.
Yes, Lord Mayor. I believe that you say it's just a submission. It's not conclusion of the matter. We just want to submit to the local government, isn't it?
Yes, council, we'd be submitting this as when they open up, which is open now, our views on the matter. And but then, but we can start off on point five, talks about us starting the open briefing sessions immediately. So that's one out of, I think it's a twenty-plus page document. That's one element that's talked about in there. And we're saying, well, we're happy to implement that as a starting point. Maybe we show all the councils that are against it. It's actually not that bad. So. Well, I might, if there's no other further discussion, I'll just put my word of reply. I just think once again, it's a, and I was misquoted slightly by the media with regards to my comments about this and that's why I would like to make sure that it's properly reflected. You know, as you know, Liverpool council does have a relationship currently with the Minister for Local Government and the OLG and I think it's important that we demonstrate that, you know, we are, we're open-minded, we're happy to be leaders, we're happy to work with any government regardless of their affiliation to adopt things. So, you know, if the minister, who is of a different political persuasion than myself, and we're happy to take any good ideas, I think this is a good idea. He's an experienced mayor. He did the job for, I think, thirty-odd years. And I think we should support the minister and we should try this and be the first and see how it goes. Maybe if the sector gets out there and has this change and convinces the minister otherwise, then I think that's a good time to reassess it and we can go from there. Alright, so that was my right. So that was my right of reply. All right. Everyone, I'll now, I'll now put forward the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against.
If, if we can, if we could, if we could.
But the time.
Change five. And, and, and look, I, I understand where, where you're coming from between with the minister and whatever. But sometimes you've got to be careful what you wish for.
Sorry, sorry, councillor. I don't mean to interrupt, but we, we, we've, we've had, we've had the debate and the opportunity, the opportunity to debate it as.
But as I said, I, I, I would, I could support it if it was without the immediately open door briefing. If it was that we could, we would review and make our briefing sessions more transparent and accountable. I don't have a problem with that, but I think open door briefing session is something that, you know, we, we, we need further discussion on.
Yep.
I mean, I, I don't want to vote it down for the sake of voting it down. Truly, I, I, I don't. I, I, I support. A, a bulk of the recommendations within the paper, but I'm just saying that, you know, I understand why five is there. But I think it's, it's important that, you know, that we, we do, we do what is realistic and what is reasonable. And I, I don't think the way that the open door briefing sessions are described are, are either realistic or reasonable.
I, I'm interrupting councillor, but we, we, we've, we've had the debate and I've given you ample opportunity. If it was a, it was, it was the, the, the opportunity to pass an amendment is, has, has passed. Or to recommend an amendment at least now being a mayoral minute.
Mister Mayor, can we request a division, please?
Yep. Okay. Have a division. All those in favour of the mayoral minute, please stand. Thank you. Those against? So councillor Restevsky, you'll be abstaining, so you'll be voting against. For the minute you'll be recorded as. But it gets. It gets recorded as against, not as an abstention. We don't recognise abstentions under the code of meeting practice. Thank you, councillors. And sorry councillor, this is just another one about Sydney Water, which, about the mosquitoes. And I'm sorry I didn't get to earlier. So can I get a copy as well, please? Yeah, so councillors, thank you. The mosquito plague in East Liverpool has severely impacted residents and has caused significant disruption to daily life. The Oxyponds at Sydney's water recycling plant, which measure twenty acres in total. In work from was discovered by associate professor Cameron Webb as the primary source of excess mosquito breeding impacting residents of Chipping Norton and beyond. The excess mosquito breeding was caused by the oxyponds being run over by frogbit weed. And turned an eight hectare body of stagnant, turned it into an eight hectare body of stagnant water. Sydney Water and the New South Wales Government have responded to the emergency and are working to clear the pond. However, this is a little full, of little comfort to residents who have been, who have been inconvenienced. We have never ever seen anything like this before. And what I'd like to put forward councillor is that we write to the New South Wales Government requesting that they do all in their power to mitigate the current mosquito plague in the Liverpool O G A. Two, request a detailed report from the New South Wales Government on how this occurred and how they ensure that this will never happen again. Three, request that Sydney Water compensate all impacted residents for the inconvenience caused. And a point four, receive a report on how councillor Harle, deputy mayor, I need your wording on this, the, the open drains. What's the. The open drainage channels, that what they technically refer to? The stormwater, yeah, the, the, so that how the stormwater. Only for theatrics councillor. Yeah, how the open stormwater drains contribute to mosquito populations.
Do you consider a point six? Frogbit, as I understand it, is actually a biosecurity risk. And I think a part of what in their brief, in Sydney Water's briefings has been that, that they'd net, that we've not seen it before, that they never expected. How aggressive frogbit actually grows. So, I mean, it raises the question into its biosecurity risk as to, I understand it's used in aquariums. Whether, you know, in writing to the agriculture and. The relevant federal government body as to, you know, how is it that it's, because I understand there's a whole. A series of ways of, of how they've got to handle the frogbit when they, when it's disposed of. It's got to be disposed of in a certain way. So it doesn't spread further.
Can I ask to, that's a very, very long point five.
Yeah, I know. I'm just doing for context. But clearly it, it is a biosecurity risk.
Yeah, so, yeah, I guess what, 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 what do you want us to do? Do we, I'm happy for you to unpack it afterwards, just for the.
Well, if we can, I guess we've been, you know, putting frogbit in there that, you know, the. You know, that we write to Sydney Water, to the, the Minister for Agriculture.
Yep.
And the federal Minister for Agriculture and Biosecurity on the frogbit and what the risks are. And.
So basically, if I can, you don't have to type it yet.
We're just working on it.
Working on it.
Yeah, it'll change again.
Some collaboration. So, uh, uh, write to the relevant ministers, federal and state. About what they're doing to ensure that frogbit as a, I think, I think they changed it's not a non, a noxious weed, but as a. Call it for a noxious weed.
Yep.
Um, what they're doing to make sure it doesn't. To prevent it from getting in.
Well, it's, it's control or, and, and or it's eradication.
Yeah.
Because imagine if that got, got into like the waterway, the creeks, George's River would be dreadful.
So what are their frogbit strategies? Frogbit mitigation strategies?
Yeah, yeah. Elimination would be there.
Yeah. So I, so the point five would be then. That we write to the relevant federal and state ministers. About, asking them. About what their strategies to eliminate frogbit. Are. Frog B I T, yep. Cool. Yep. Happy with that. Is there any discussion?
Yes. There is a notice of motion in relation to the same issue. I've noticed it's been moved at the back of the book. Any particular reason why, normally it's at the front from, from my understanding. But dealing with the same issue twice. I think it might be best to deal with the one issue because I've, I've read the notice of motion by councillor Sam Keneb. And it's quite, it goes into quite detail and there's financial implications as well. So. How does this relate to another notice of motion about the same topic?
So councillor, in the code of meaning practice, it states out where noms are, noms go. So that's why we say move to the back. That's been the practice of council since the code of meaning practice was changed a while ago. Point two, councillor Keneb's motion, yes, does talk about mosquitoes, but talks about, has different, different actions. So in that sense, they are separate items. They can be dealt with, they can be dealt with collectively. But the. A councillor should have the opportunity to put forward their motion without it being, well, they can amend it, don't get me wrong. But he still can deal with it because that talks about a financial impact. What this is about saying, what, how does this not happen again? So they are whilst mosquitoes, but they're two different things.
I'd like to propose a, a sixth point.
Yes, councillor.
That we, really, this should be probably an amendment to the first point. But that in writing to the relevant ministers in the first point. That we acknowledge the fact that since the outbreak, there were eight hectares of frogbit weed over the pond. Now there are four hectares. That's a reduction of fifty percent since the state government and Sydney Water have been aware of the problem. Tests as of Wednesday last week demonstrate that larval density has reduced by ninety eight percent. What this means is that ninety percent of mosquito activity is expected to reduce over the next two weeks. And the state government has taken appropriate action and should be commended on the swift and immediate action that they have taken. I'd also propose a sixth point. If that is a sixth, then that should be a seventh point.
Councillor. All due respect, the, if we, if we can just go back. Our community has suffered significantly. I don't know, and I didn't want to really go into this, but I'm happy to now. Yes, Sydney Water has acted since we brought it to their attention. But how did they not notice that a twenty acre water pond that should have no vegetation, had vegetation on it? Had they had been inspecting it, this never would have happened.
And Liverpool Council been implementing its mosquito management plan. That the outbreaks across the rest of the local government area wouldn't have occurred either. So, you know.
If you wanna, I, I, I think you just need to be cautious councillor about, uh, uh, making comment about staff and operational matters. Right, we have.
Comment on the answer to a question on notice in the agenda and comment provided by the CEO on the. A notice of motion that councillor Keneb put up provides contradictory statements. I think it's well within council's rights to interrogate those matters as well.
I'm just saying, so ultimately councillor, you have Sydney Water. Which has, which is responsible for Sydney's drinking water and sewage. But, yeah, but you're, they had a twenty acre, eighty thousand square meters. Of an area which I think would be, I don't know what, how big the CBD is, but probably similar sized CBD, that has overgrown completely in vegetation, right? Council organised for the scientists to go there, right? The question about this is that, oh, if, is what are they going to do about it? They have caused this problem. It's black and white. The scientists confirmed they caused this problem. Whilst, yes, there has been a great operational working relationship with the staff and Sydney Water to deal with it, which is fantastic. But that does not negate the fact that our community has suffered because of Sydney Water.
Of course.
Right? And that's why, and that's the purpose of, uh, uh, why we're writing to them, not having a go at Sydney Water. Right? But not, not patting them on the back at the same time.
They should be acknowledged for their efforts.
Uh, no, if you want to get down to it, they should, they should, they should be condemned for allowing this to happen. Because that's what our community wants, right? And I'm not going down that path, right? So it's purely saying there, how does this not happen again? Right? So.
We've got to eliminate the frogbit.
Yeah.
Because it's, you know, to, to be honest and.
Sorry, councillor Green.
To, to, to be honest, that, that, the frog, the, the presence of frogbit is a part, is a huge part of the problem. Because no, even though it may have been noted earlier that frogbit was present in some of the ponds. There was no expectational understanding, as my understanding is, of how aggressive. That the frogbit takes off when it grows. That is a huge part of the problem, which is why. It's treated as a secu, as a biosecurity risk is why we need to be talking about. For, for the environment of eliminating frogbit completely.
Councillor Keneb.
Uh, yes. Look, just in relation to your comments, Mister Mayor, about condemning the state government. I think, and you, you talked about community expectations. I think the community expectations are we don't play a blame game. We share a responsibility.
Point of order. You didn't condemn the state government. You condemned Sydney Water.
Yeah. See, sorry. Yeah. And, yeah, thank you. And you're right. And I didn't, the motion as written doesn't condemn anybody.
I hear that. I guess my point is what the community wants from us is take accountability. And Sydney Water should as well, no doubt, and they've taken steps. You've acknowledged that they've taken serious steps to fix the issue and the improvement across the last couple of weeks. Of course, the emails and the correspondence we've been getting about those improvements show that they've done an outstanding job. So in terms of condemning them or making an issue out of it, I think it's important that. The question on notice that councillor Green has raised in addition to my notice of motion. There's clearly some, some ambiguity around when the actual mosquito plan was implemented, whether or not it was given any costs. So I think we need to look at what we've done as well because like councillor Monahan said, there's that issue that you raised. But there's also the rest of the community. Like I'm in West Hoxton and there's been a ton of mosquitoes out there and they've been everywhere. And they haven't just been affecting one particular area, but largely the whole local government area. So I think it's, it's twofold in that sense that we need to. And you were right in terms of saying that my notice of motion talks about what we can do moving forward. But in accepting that position, there's also got to be acknowledgement from ourselves. That had we had not taken away funds from the mosquito management plan in a couple of years, then maybe. Just maybe we didn't contribute to this mess because it's possible that we did. So accepting that, taking ownership of it and putting in place mechanisms, as I've suggested out in the notice of motion. Just really doesn't play the blame game and just talks about steps that we can do moving forward.
So on, and councillor can argument that the debate on your motion happens when your motion gets called, right? This is a, they, they, they're separate items.
I hear what you say.
Right? So, you know, we, we have your, if you want to bring your one forward and we can discuss at the same time, that becomes different. This is purely about saying, how does this not happen again?
I think, I think we can do that. If you suggest that you want to bring it forward, we can bring it forward because largely there is a. And councillor, I think deputy mayor, sorry. I think that they are contradictory to a degree. Both of our, your mayoral minute and my notice of motion talk about different aspects, but.
Yeah, hence why.
But they go hand in hand in terms of, in terms of points one, two and three. Like request that Sydney Water compensate all impacted residents for the inconvenience caused. Of course, it's been a massive inconvenience. There's been nothing on the shelves. I agree with you. You can't find any mosquito spray. The issue though is where did we go wrong and what can we do to go back and fix it? Because there's some inconsistencies like councillor Monahan and we need to address that when we talk about this aspect because they're intertwined to a sense.
And like I said, so there is a, there's a, there's a norm, there's a question with notice which we're getting to ultimately is. Like I said, if you look at what's there and just look at purely what the mayoral minute is about. It's writing to the New South Wales Government, making sure they'd all attend to mitigate the, the current situation. Right? So Sydney Water is responsible for one part. And when we met with Sydney Water, they said to us mosquitoes don't fly more than two kilometres. That's their, that's their position, right? Point blank. So the New South Wales Government spray, so Department of Education started spraying schools, but not private schools. Right? They didn't spray childcare centres, right? So why be, why are they being selective, right? So that's what point one is about, doing everything they can to help do it. The next point talks about, right? How did this happen? How, what are the operations, what are the operational policies that are in place by Sydney Water, right? Because I tell you what, no one, we haven't really got a clear answer. And we can see it on near maps. We saw it grow. Yeah. What are they doing and how did it happen again? Once again, we're not going on about, let's do some point scoring, right? All we're saying, do, number one talks about do what you can do. Number two then talks about is make sure this will never happen again, right? Number three says our community has gone through significant cost, right? Because of this water body, these twenty acres that are filled with an amount of larvae that we've never, ever seen before, which have gone more than two kilometres. Because once they get to the kilometres, they breed and go another two kilometres and go another two kilometres. Hence why they're out in West Hoxton and everywhere else, right?
Exactly right. But my point is about your comments about the two kilometres. We've let them get there because had we had the mechanisms in place like we did in two thousand and nineteen, maybe they wouldn't have gone that far.
This is like, it's like Wuhan. This is like ground zero and it's spread and it's spread and it's spread, right? But that's what we want, that's what we want to know, right? The other part is we talk about, okay, a little bit, these stormwater drainage channels, which deputy mayor is very, is very passionate about. You know, we need to know whether they're in there or not. And, and another one is councillor Green's point. So like I said, we can have them skilled. We can look at what, what can councillor do, but this is purely talking about these points that are here on the table. We'll get to the discussion. But that's why I say, are you speaking for or against this? Councillor Keneb? But that's why I say, are you speaking for or against this? Councillor Carnib? Yeah, but for or against?
Frank, in terms of the ways, the, the wordage, um, of sequen- uh, sorry, the wordage of point, uh, one, two, three, in my opinion, is simply trying to shift the blame game. That's, that's the way I interpret it. I'm all about, if your mayoral minute was.
So you don't believe Sydney Water had anything to do with this?
No, 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 of course, no, no.
But then what's, what's wrong with asking the government, right? Right? You just, you just voted against the government policy that they want us to do, right? So if we're talking about politics here, it's, it's, this is nothing about politics.
Politics, Mr Mayor, it's about what the community want. They want us to accept responsibility, move on.
So you're saying councillor's responsible for the mosquitoes?
No, no, they want us to address it, not just go and blame the state government or Sydney Water. That's not, that's not what the community wants of this.
All right. Thank you councillor. Any, any further discussions, figures for or against?
Yeah, uh, if I may, to the chair.
Yes councillor.
I just wanna understand something here. Are we representing Liverpool or are we representing Sydney Water? Because it's clear to me that we're requesting the government to be responsible. You see, they say prevention is better than kill. But if you know the cost of the disease or somebody who has, who is private company, who is charging us, cause we don't get water for free, um, in, in Sydney. And if they have caused an issue in the community, I believe that we should hold them accountable for it. And then this letter to them is just to make sure that it's not gonna happen again. Because they are part of the community and they're providing us water. So I don't think that we should be debating to say that we're blaming Sydney Water or we're blaming the government. We should let them know that, look, this has happened. We want them to take note of it and it will not happen again in the future. That's how I read it.
Thank you councillor. Any other speakers for or against?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor?
Look, I disagree with point three. Uh, we, we, we're blaming Sydney Water for the outbreak, this particular outbreak because of frogbit. Frogbit is not necessarily the main reason. Mosquitoes will breed in stagnant water or still water, which that, that large area is. And for all we know, that back in twenty twenty, when we had the previous outbreak, we didn't discover that that was the place where it came from. And I can't understand why Sydney Water didn't do that. They should have. And I would suggest that we had a very large outbreak then and that Sydney Water, that those ponds in particular, I would believe were responsible for it. The frogbit is just a cover that prevents, uh, aerial spraying from reaching the larvae. That's what it does. And frogbit is an introduced species. Many people own aquariums and tropical fish have frogbit in there as a cover for that. And consequently, when these, uh, these aquariums are drained into the sewage system, it gets into places as it did. So that's an issue there. I do have a problem in that I think Sydney Water should have been aware of that much quicker than they did. Now that they did, I think they've done a decent job of removing it in the timeframe that they did. We now have, as, as councillor Monahan pointed out, ninety-eight percent of the larvae have disappeared, have died. The problem is mosquitoes, the female mosquitoes can live for up to two months after the larvae comes out. So there is a possibility that we will have those mosquitoes around for two months, not two weeks, two months. The male mosquito lasts two months. Uh, but, and as you, Mr Mayor, you pointed out, that once these things fly around, they find another stagnant water hole. They breed there and consequently, it's not just two kilometers, it's quite easy for them to get up to ten and twenty kilometers from the original source. Uh, and as I say, I think, personally, I think Sydney Water, yes, should have been responsible for the outbreak in the first place. Back in twenty twenty, when it happened before, they should have looked. And our Dr Webb, who, uh, we hired to look at it at that time, didn't find it either. So, you know, it's, 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 I would think it was just a matter of chance that they picked on the, uh, what is it, Warwick Farm Water Treatment Works, and they were lucky, I think. Uh, I do know that we, you've heard me talk about stormwater drainage just before. I'm totally against the current system that Sydney Water is introducing of naturalisation of stormwater drainage systems, uh, taking them back to nature. That is going to be an almighty problem. You will have small billabongs, small ponds of water that are stagnant, they don't have water flowing through them. There won't be any fish in them and consequently you'll get the mosquito problem everywhere where you've got stormwater drains. I live next to one, I know all about it. And, and we know, we're talking about Brickmakers Creek, that's going to be changed to the very thing that's going to allow the mosquitoes to breed. So we're, we're, we're compounding the problem. And I subscribe to stormwater drainage, uh, there's a, a body that's a, a commercial body that it appears to be in their interests to make sure that we have, that we go back to these naturalisation of stormwater drains. I'm totally against that. It's going to cost billions of dollars to maintain those. And then that's going to compound the mosquito problem. So if we're raising this, we should be raising some of these other issues as well. Thank you.
Yeah, doesn't, uh, thank you councillor, Deputy Mayor. Point four, I think that's what that talks about is asking for um, that. All right, everyone, um, if there's no further discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against? I declare carried. Next item on the agenda is Plan Zero One, Call of Reports, uh, page forty-four, tab one, recognition forty-four. Clause four point six variations to development, uh, standards.
Yeah, I move it.
Move councillor AJ, second to councillor Green. Okay, who's Mike? Sorry, councillor AJ, can you turn Michael? Yes, councillor Siewski.
Uh, do we know who the owner of the property is?
Well, pass it on to the CEO.
Thanks, through the chair. Um, I'll just have to refer to the director of planning compliance, but in her absence, can we just take that on notice for a very short period of time? Maybe come back to Plan Zero One?
Yeah, we'll just maybe, we'll, uh, defer that to the, uh, or we can either resolve it now and get the information afterwards councillor, or we just defer it to the end of the meeting before, huh? Uh, defer the matter to the end of the meeting. All right. Is the mover and second are happy with that? Yep, all in favour, against, declare carried. Next item is Plan Zero Two, page forty-seven, tab two, a declaration on page forty-seven. Revocation of the Companion Animal Advisory Committee. Moving the recommendation, councillor Green?
Uh, can I actually, uh, move that we get a quarterly report on this? That's my, uh, motion.
That's, uh.
To discuss what we need to move it in second at first.
Yeah. Hold on, it's a, like, we've, it's, the motion's been, recommendation moved by councillor Green. We need a second for that first.
I'm happy to second.
Second to councillor McNaul. Um, councillor Siewski, you wanted to move, what do you mean by quarterly report?
So we get a, so now that we're dissolving the committee, that we get a quarterly report, coming back to council on, on a lot of these issues that, uh, involve animals.
So that would be, um, that would have to be then as a, add that as an extra point to the motion then. Is the mover and second are happy?
Yeah, um, I, I think that it's, I think it's important, um, and thank you councillor Siewski for bringing that to the table, um. I think that it's important that we still receive, um, reports about companion animals and, and the great work that council does with that. Um, I don't think that, that, that particular committee is, i- is the right vehicle. So I think that a report maybe in the councillor updates that come monthly or every second month or something like that, we could get a report on the same statistics that were delivered at that, at that committee meeting, which is, you know, um, amount of animals picked up and things. You can, you can see that from what was happening in that committee, but I'm, I'm happy to move the way that we are in the interest of efficiencies, um, to, to get that report.
So if we could maybe word it that, um, so in the committee, you'd get a report. So that a, a similar, the point to that a similar report be provided to councillors. It's like, be similar report provided to councillors at the same frequency as was reported to the committee.
Maybe an expanded report? Um, I'll tell you a, a bit of a story. Um, at the, at the last, when I went home after the extraordinary council meeting, um, the other week, um, I got home, my husband was in a flurry, uh, he'd gone out to the, uh, letterbox and someone had left a red bucket under, um, some of our gr- greenery and it had four newborn kittens in it. Now, he didn't know what to do with that. There was no, I guess, you know, that like, if we can review how we capture statistics, what is it that we're actually counting? And what is it that we actually know about clearly? And when I went on to the community pages, I came across a couple of posts, ki- ki- you know, ki- kittens being dumped. Um, so clearly, you know, maybe we need to think about how often, uh, or we need to increase the de-sexing of cats that we offer the de-sexing, um, in particular areas. But I'm thinking we need an expanded, I mean, I don't know how many animals are dumped in, you know, particularly puppies or kittens or whatever, um. So how we track that, if we can track that. I think I agree with, um, councillor McNaul that maybe the, the, um, the committee, uh, wasn't really reaching the purpose that it could have, whether it's a revisiting of what kind of co- committee that there should be, but in the meantime, while we review that or, uh, refine it, that, uh, at least having the reports come to us either through the councillor update would be a really good step forward.
Undercut? Oh, the CEO?
Through the chair, I'll refer to director of compliance. My understanding is we don't do felines at all.
Through the acting CEO, yes, that's correct. Uh, we, we currently do provide quarterly reporting through the council update on companion animals, so on, um, dogs. Uh, we don't report on cats purely because we don't, uh, collect cats and we just purely don't have the capacity for it. We take an alternative approach and, uh, emphasise proactive cat management with our community and provide free microchipping and, and registration. Um, but we don't report on cats because we just don't collect them. Um, we do currently provide as part of a historical resolution, quarterly updates on, um, animals seized, impounded, surrendered by the owner, um, uh, animals that are, uh, dogs that have been put down um, and the reasons why. Um, but, uh, happy, I mean, this resolution will just emphasise the existing practice and happy to bring to a briefing meeting, a template, and we could consider including any other additional variables in there that you want to know about.
Yeah, we would have to. Yeah. Um.
Councillor?
Thank you. Um, thanks, Mr Mayor. Um, yeah, that, that report is, is excellent then, that's what we usually get or used to get at that committee. Um, I wonder if also in that report, and, and I, I like the idea of having a workshop so we can tease out anything else that we might be interested in receiving. Um, if we could just get an update in that report of when the next de-sexing, um, operation will happen. I don't mean operation, de-sexing day will happen. Um, so that we as councillors can also disseminate that information to the community. I know we do social media around it and stuff, but it's nice if we all are, are, you know, on track with when that's happening as well, so just align in the, in the update. Um, and yeah, a way we might be able to coordinate with local vets and things to see whether or not cats are going there. Um, if, can I just, with the indulgence of the mover, add a third point that we, um, uh, we, um, I can't, I'm lost for the word that I wanna put at the start, but it's about, um, um, that we emphasise our continued commitment to the delivery of an animal shelter in the LGA and that we continue to work on that as well. As a matter of urgency.
Is the second or, is the, sorry, the mover happy with that? Great. Maybe you can just repeat that a little bit slower so I can get typed up?
Just to emphasise our continued commitment to the delivery of an animal shelter for the animals of the LGA as a matter of urgency.
Happy with that? Thank you. Any further discussion?
Uh, yes.
Yes Deputy Mayor?
Uh, I used to be a member of that committee on a regular basis. And yes, while I don't believe we need the committee anymore, but I do believe in what other councillors have said, we need a report to come back on the statistics in particular. Uh, because residents are very concerned about that and quite often that because we are basically a no-kill, uh, what would you call it, a no-kill centre there? And, um, that it's being partially operated with the veterinary centre there. I think it's a really good outcome. It's a good value for money. So, and I think they're doing a very, very good job out there. I've gone out there quite often to see what it is. But I would appreciate, uh, a report that gave us the statistics just to show the residents that we are doing a reasonably good job. And I know we also have a, uh, a website, the Animal Shelter website. And on that website, there's a lot of good information and good reporting that occurs. And I think council, particularly the, the rangers out there that look after the companion animals do an excellent job and they should be commended for what they do.
What was that councillor Green, sorry? Didn't get to, is any of the further speakers? Would you like to write a reply?
No, I think we will talk down.
I think you're misleading the chamber there councillor, because, uh, it's only an hour and seventeen minutes into the meeting. If there's, uh, no further discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, I declare unanimous.
Mr Mayor, before moving to comms, I have two urgency motions, if I can put them to the floor please, yes.
Let's go councillor, let's, no.
Um, one was regarding the recent event at the Community Cafe, which I believe most of yous would have heard about through social media. Over the weekend, Community Cafe was broken into in their Sudlia stall. And, um, most of the gifts, if not all the gifts for the children for their, um, Christmas handout on the fifteenth of December had been stolen, along with the Yara truck that was parked there. So, um, I believe the motion is there. I'll, I would like to, if, with your approval, um, provide Community Cafe with five thousand dollars to assist with the immediate replacement of Christmas gifts. Um, to support the continuous of the operation. Work with Community Cafe to explore long-term measures to ensure security and prevent further incidents, including funding opportunities and partnerships.
And why is it urgent councillor?
Because the event is actually on the fifteenth of December, which is only three weeks away. So it won't be able to apply for any grants or anything like that in the meantime.
All right, yeah, so I'm happy to accept the urgency of the matter. Uh, you just would need to add a point three please, if we can go down, uh, or, um, just with respect to the, um, funding source, or you can add that to point one.
Uh, yeah, funding source would have to be. Uh, yeah, funding source would have to be from either general funds or reserve funds from the, uh, community grants, if there's any available in that.
Yeah, what's due from the community grants then? What do from the community grants?
Yeah. Happy to do that.
All right. Uh, is there a second of the motion? Second, a councillor Green? Yes councillor Osevsky?
I, I support the motion. Can we find out what's left in the, um, community grants budget after this?
It's in the, uh, agenda councillor. I think it's, uh, item. So I think page, uh, 76 of the agenda shows a balance of 194. Should we adopt the recommendations in, uh, the booklet, in that motion? There's 194805, which will take you to 189805. Any other further discussion? I'll put the motion, all is in favour, against, I declare it unanimous. You say a second one councillor?
Thank you councillor AJ. In recognition of the recent events that are transpiring in, um, Lebanon and the suffering of the Lebanese people over the past three months of the, um, war that's occurring there and the incoming, sorry, I'm just going to get a bit emotional there. Um, coming into winter, families that are being displaced have got no blankets, no mattresses, nowhere to live. As a result, I call upon every councillor here today to support me with this motion, to approve a $20,000 donation to Aus Relief or whatever organisation the CEO sees fit that are handing out in Lebanon. Um, as 1,000 people have been displaced, sorry, sorry.
Take your time councillor.
We've had 1,000 deaths, that's only in September, 6,352 injured, 1,800 kids killed. Health workers are suffering, the country's suffering. This contribution would mean quite a lot, not only to the kids, but the families as well, both here in Australia and overseas, by standing together as humans in support. Thank you.
So councillor, um, thank you for that. And, uh, why is the matter urgent?
Because next month, Mr. Mayor, it's actually officially winter in Lebanon. So therefore this stuff needs to get there before winter hits. That's why it's urgent.
Yep. I'm happy to accept that as an urgency motion. Uh, do you have a second of the motion? Second, a councillor Carneeb? Funding source.
I believe this would only need to come from general funds as we don't have anything of, of the thought.
Osevsky?
Sorry. Um, just going back to the community grants, um, we still got some funding available there. I suggest to come out of there. Community grants, we've got 28,000. Why not take it out of there?
Yep. Councillor?
If, if you guys are happy to do that, because I didn't want to see, I didn't want it to be seen as taken away from our children here in our community here, that we're donating to a different country. That's what I thought coming out of general funds would probably be the best way. But if you guys are happy to do it that way, I'm happy to go either way. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Um, if we ask the CEO or the acting CEO, um, or clarification on which funds that is to help the people?
Thank you. Through the chair, I'll just refer to the CFO. Sorry, the director, corporate support.
Through you, uh, CEO. Um, quite honestly, the, the, um, level of reserve funds, unrestricted reserve funds as of September is, is zero. Um, and we're presenting a quarter budget review with a deficit. So we have to be very cautious as a council, um, what we start allocating from general funds because, um, uh, we have to make ground, is what I'm saying basically.
So in that respect, uh, through the chair, uh, community funds, we'll, we'll take the advice of councillor Rostevsky, and I think we've got five for the first one and 20 for the next one, both at the same fund with a 28 balance.
So the mover and second are happy with that? Okay. Is there any other discussion? Councillor Deputy Mayor?
Yes, I have a question. While I fully support councillor Amun's efforts, the issue is, will all of that money get to where it's going? We've had this many, these sorts of discussions over my 16 years as a councillor, many times. Are we looking at or have you looked at exactly how much money the federal government is, is giving, or for that matter, the state government? It usually runs into multi-millions of dollars. What we're doing here is a pittance compared to what's needed. And therefore I would suggest that maybe this money probably, or not all of it, will get to where it's going to go. It's a token effort compared to what the federal government is probably already doing. I don't know how much it is, but I would suggest it runs into millions of dollars in aid as it is. So I, I won't be voting against this, but I'm saying this is a pittance compared to what's needed.
Thank you. Through the chair. So if we get a recommendation for, uh, and my direction, um, what I would do is conduct, uh, to conduct due diligence as to the appropriate charity, uh, to best efforts, make sure that, uh, as much of the $20,000 donation actually hits the floor, irrespective of, um, you know, where that sits in parity to federal funding, um, I'll make sure that if it is Aus Relief, that they have the mechanisms in place to ensure that when donations are forwarded, uh, we're not spending 15 of that to somewhere else. So I'll conduct due diligence as part of recommendation for, if that's appropriate to council.
Through the chair, I've, I've actually dealt with Aus Relief, hence why I've actually recommended them there. They have zero administration fee, that's why I thought they'll be the best one for it. So the whole 20,000 will be going to the people that deserve to have that money. But it's, as again, I, I agree with you on point four and happy for you to do that.
So I think if you just add, uh, add the end of affected subject to, um, following due diligence at the end of point three? On the end of point three, please. Is the mover and second are happy with that?
And just one more point. I don't believe the, the state or federal government has contributed anything towards Lebanon yet.
Hmm, I don't know. I think, leave that for another time and double check, but if you wanna, or either way you could say, if you wanna write, um, I think leave that for another time. Yeah, I think just to check.
I think what matters, what matters today about this motion is if we give, I think there are 10, $10 a mattress at the moment and $5 a blanket. If we give each child a blanket and a mattress, how much will $20,000 do?
Yes, um, the only thing I'd like to say is, um, councillor Amun, um, had said that he's had dealings with, um, Aus Relief and he knows that there's a zero dollar administration fee. Um, point three says an organisation such as Aus Relief, the only thing I'd ask is perhaps a point, whether it's a subsection to point three or a point five, um, that upon, upon the acting CEO making a determination as to whether or not it is, it is in fact Aus Relief, um, that we know, um, exactly where, um, that money is being spent. Because like councillor Amun said, if it is mattresses, um, and pillows and things of that nature, then it'd be nice to quantify, uh, the level of impact that our donations actually had on, on the community, um, and then actually come back to us and see.
So something along the lines of, sorry, council be notified of the, um, the impact of its funds or?
Yes, but also which organisation we end up going with. For example, i- if it says such as Aus Relief, i- is it Aus Relief? Or if, if it turns out to be somebody else, we just want to know who it is?
So the?
Yes.
The details or impact of its fund?
Yes.
Of, of, of its, yes. Councillor Hart?
Uh, sorry, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I think point four does that. Direct the acting CEO to expedite the transfer of these funds and report back to council on the organisation selected and the impact of the donation. I don't see how that's different to point five.
I actually would agree with that. Unless there's something from point four that's, you'd like to see added councillor Carneeb? Okay.
So the specific, sorry.
Knowing exactly where the money's gone and what on.
Yeah, I think just add that, I just worked that into point four, please.
I've got no issues with that. And just if?
And, uh, and I put, just put, and the specific impact of the donation.
And if it is somebody else, that it is an Aus Relief and there is a charging fee, then what we, you know, what they eat into it, we should know about.
Yeah. I think the, uh, the intent is understood. We don't have to be that prescriptive in the actual wording.
Wonderful.
Okay. Any, any further discussion?
If they can bring us photos. No? No photos? Okay.
Yeah, I agree with councillor Amun on that.
All right. If there's no further discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, declare it unanimous. The councils, I'll call a recess until 3:45. Number 01, I declare the meeting resumed. Uh, page 56, tab three, recommendation on page 57, we brought back to council on 2168 Children's Parliament.
I have a motion?
Yes councillor Osevsky, what's your motion?
I'll just get him to, I'll just get him to put it up on the screen. While, while that's happening, a couple of questions. There's a, there's a thing in there about quantity surveyors. Um, do we know how much we spend on quantity surveyors a year in council?
I'm assuming they have to probably take that on notice, but I couldn't be surprised.
Uh, through the chair, we'll take that on notice. We, we do have the number, uh, we just don't know it. Yep. So I'll have to review the last, I, I assume annually? Councillor? Um, yeah, I've got a motion up there. I just want to recommend and commend the, uh, 2168 Children's Parliament. They've got some very good points raised there and, uh, I think it's important that we take notes of what they go into and their recommendations and whatnot. So my motion, uh, is on the screen. Actually, can you delete point two? Cause it won't make any sense. Yep, that's my motion.
Seconded.
Second, a councillor Monahan. Any discussion?
I have a point in terms of, uh, the CCTV. Um, I was at a meeting, uh, earlier this week, uh, in relation to 2168, and it came up about the CCTV. Apparently there, if I can recall it correctly, there's not a, uh, funding streaming council of, in the grants programme that would cover CCTV. Apparently if the, if the, uh, if we could organise what the cost is of the CCTV camera, Core is quite happy to put one up. And the police officer that attended said that Green Valley Police could be, would be able to monitor it. Haveria is, is not, is not here today, but I, it, she has the, the guts of it. I'm sorry that I haven't got the whole context, but, um, yes, that if, that, that, the issue of the CCTV could occur earlier.
I can respond. Thank you for the chair. In relation to CCTV, uh, the New South Wales Police can monitor it. Their own policies mandate they should not monitor it. We have actually a feed into Liverpool Police Station from our CBD, um, which is reactionary, right? Um, so that's actually monitored, it's not monitored 24/7. If something happens, we would review it. Uh, this would be the same process. 24-hour monitoring is a different play. Um, but certainly happy to keep working with the, um, New South Wales Police. I had the new commander in my office last week talking about these kind of initiatives. So that's something we can absolutely do.
And the police officer who attended that did make that, the question was, what, how does the CBD work? He explained that. He said, you know, if Core had it up, we could have the monitor in Green Valley Police Station that they could, similar to Liverpool.
Just got a question.
Councillor McNam?
Uh, just got a question. Um, uh, agree with the motion, um, and, you know, the 2168 Children's Parliament are amazing. We had them here presenting to us at the last meeting of the last council. I just wanted to ask whether or not we need to, I guess it's through the chair to the appropriate director, whether we need a budget variation or something for it to come out of the communications budget, because it's not somewhere it would normally, it's something that would normally happen.
Thank you councillor. Through the chair, we don't have budget for the, uh, the resolution through the communications budget. So we're going to have to make a budget variation to, to, um, accommodate the, the motion as stated.
So councillor, councillor Osevsky, did you, did you intend to have it coming out of the communications budget?
It says the, uh, um, the director mentioned, and we have a zero unrestricted cash reserve, so we need to be prudent on the way we're spending money. And I think there are some areas in the budget that I think have some fat. Um, and I'm going to leave that to the CEO and the relevant department to try and figure that one out.
So I just, um, yeah, and I know council has prepared its budget, but just the CEO, I guess, the, um, that's 100 and, uh, $230,000. Yeah, um.
Thank, thank you. Through the chair, we'll, we'll find the money, uh, councillor, through the chair. Um, it's just, uh, to take it out of the communications budget is not possible at this stage, but, um, as the councillor has identified, there's always opportunities to best spend our money and we'll find it within another part of the budget, operational budget this year.
So then, then as a matter of saying, to ident, um, to identify a funding source? Cause if it's saying?
Needs to have a funding source to be resolved.
Yep. Yeah, that doesn't, that doesn't work.
Any particular reason why it can't come out of the communications budget? Um, my understanding that it is possible. Through the chair, I'll refer to the director who's holding that budget for a comment.
Ah, okay. An amateur. Uh, thank you, acting CEO. I, um, I'll, I can assure you that the communications budget is totally committed. There is no, um, uh, available budget to do this type of project, which is not in the communications realm. In any case, it's more operational, as, as you rightly said. I'm happy to do, organise a briefing for all the councillors on the communications team and what they do and, um, and how much they support the council. So you can see that that investment is, is broader than just, uh, media relations. It's also all our social media and video, uh, content, uh, all the material we produce within the council organisation, like brochures and, and. and material all over our thirty five different locations is produced through the communications team and our print shop. So it's quite a diverse and very stretched team at the moment, so I'm happy to do a briefing on that, but there is no budget despair, I can assure you, Mr CEO, and if you want me to produce some figures on that, I'll take that on notice.
Thank you director, through the chair, again, what I think the best way to approach it councillor is that look at, we'll look at the budget again, we'll find the money. The best place it comes from will be the less discretion, sorry, the most discretionary of items. These are important operational improvements. Again, without the pure, there's a lot of duck eggs there for me, I want to know what that actually costs, if it's fifty fifty, is a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty, and what we can actually do for that money. So I think if we can resolve it to say that the CEO will find budget for that, that's where the budget funding's coming from and that would help us out.
So now that I look in detail, so point one is valid, makes sense. Point two, the immediate costs for implementation being the following. So that should be more about allocate funds for the implementation of the following. Now, in doing that, if we're just thinking that the rollout of improvement of those elements, point one and point two, speed humps generally speaking would have to go, and correct me if I'm wrong, CEO would have to go to the traffic committee, that identify locations, that have to go to the traffic committee, come back to council and considering that it's November, what are we, twentieth today, and we're going into Christmas, that having any of these capital, the likelihood of these happening in this year's Capital Works programme is probably very minimal, I would say. I'm guessing, I don't know, like it's just trying to, looking at this. Street lighting, I don't know how long that, the process with getting more street lighting, what's, what will fifty thousand dollars in street lighting do, is it what, ten grand a light, twenty grand a light? You know, are we putting up two lights, three lights? So I guess what I'm getting, and then the QS report is, well, the QS report, I don't know, it's talked about there, but that's something that could be done now if we know what we're, what we're doing. I'll get you in a moment councillor Green, so it's, I'm just, point being is we can, councillor Restovski, we can say, let's investigate these things and have them in preparation for next year's Capital Works programme because we're not, that's pretty much already planned. I'll let you digest that for a moment whilst we refer to councillor Green.
I understand, do you attend the traffic committee? And I understand that the speed humps have already been passed, endorsed by council. I think they came, I think earlier this year and we also, there was a recommendation, it was an endorsed recommendation that a forty kilometre zone be implemented around the Miller Shopping Centre precinct. So you know, it might be in revisiting the minutes and the motions from the advice from the traffic committee to understand where those traffic implementations are up to. Because they may already be budgeted for, I don't know, but I know that we have dealt with them at the traffic committee and whether they were included in the operational plan or the ones that are being moved over to the next one, I'm not sure, so we just need to relook at that.
Yeah, I'll refer that to the CEO. Councillor Hart, can you just turn your mic off for a second, deputy mayor, sorry?
Thank you, through the chair, yes, again, the two one six eight Children's Parliament, something we all endorse, the improvements are all aspirational, as we can see from the numbers. So let's have a look at what the last traffic report said in relation to those speed humps. What is a speed hump is the next question, and where do they want them? And if that's been disclosed and of what material they're made of. Again, improvements to street lighting is rather ambiguous, but fifty thousand dollars is, we'll give council some idea if that's ten lights at five thousand or all the lights with improved lux. I don't know what that looks like, but we can go back through the traffic report and make sure that the aspirational vision of our young people is reflected in the best value improvements.
I just wanted to add a point four, director Mallard mentioned doing a briefing session on the communications team. It would be possible to get a budget report just on his area at a briefing session of councillors.
Yeah, I just think councillor, happy to do so, but this is about two one six eight and that's a completely different budgetary matter. So I recommend you bring that up or ask those questions as a separate item as to not convolute the two.
I was earlier responding to director Mallard's option to deliver that, so I thought we might as well formalise it.
Yeah, it's, I guess the staying within, we're staying within the motions about Miller and people will say, if someone looks through them and say, well, why for Miller do you go to City Futures Directorate, which is a completely different directorate and so on and so forth. I think that would best be served when we have a budget item in front of us on the agenda, which they are coming up.
Mr Mayor, perhaps it can be a question taken on notice for the director of City Futures?
Yeah, I think happy to formalise it, but yeah, we can do, but I think to, if councillor Restovski wants to formalise it, no issues with formalising, but formalising at the appropriate agenda item. Deputy Mayor, you wanted to say something, sorry?
I'll just simply to say that at the last budget meeting, we did in fact allocate funding to roundabouts and speed humps, but that was in the Austral area and it was several million dollars worth, but it may not be relevant to this particular.
Six, I think six hundred thousand dollars. CEO?
Thank you, through the chair, look, I've just been advised that probably the motion needs some adjustment as to what the acting CEO might do. Under section three point one two, a norm for expenditure of funds on works or services other than that's already provided for in council's current budget, must identify the source of funding. Now, under part A, what I should do there under the three options is prepare a report as to the availability of funds for implementing the motion. So rather than the acting CEO, so the acting CEO to prepare a report on the availability of funds for implementing the motion would do.
Is the mover and seconder happy that way?
With the acting CEO to prepare a report on the availability of funds for implementing the motion, can that be broken down as to the availability of funds in each directorate and itemised specifically? That's what I think the mover and the seconder of the motion would prefer that way. We have a good idea of, given the fact that there is a balance of zero in the unrestricted cash reserves, I think it would be a good idea to have available funds from across the directorates of council that we might be able to use in a discretionary manner going forward, given that there's dust in the general funds at the moment.
Thank you, notwithstanding, we'll give council everything as part of the budget review. The, it's a little bit counterintuitive, given the requirement set. So if it's operational improvements to infrastructure, it would come out of the operations budget. That's the way we run our business, we budget on a forecast considerate and contingent of these things. So if the intent was to aggregate the six directorates and have them have a bucket each and find what I could find within the six, if that's the intent, I think that can be resolved via council as we go through the budget review process where council has access to all the line items for all directorates. But typically we would undertake these kind of works from a budget allocated for these type of works.
Yeah, so councillor on that, if you look at the general flow of motions, councillors put up a motion, we have to identify a funding source. The most efficient way of doing things, say, okay, great, we want to do these things, give it back to the CEO, identify a funding source, if we haven't come with one prepared, identify a funding source and it comes back to us, he or she. Now, the, when we start going into looking at the detailed review of budgets, that's more of a quality review thing or a budget thing. You know what I mean, that, so motions like that should be kept confined to those sort of areas. Because if we're going to start getting prescriptive on every time we want to put up a motion about finding the funding source and doing reviews and doing that, then we'll go very, it's going to take us a while and it's not, it's not a good governance framework. We should just leave a budget item to the budget, to the quarterly reviews.
Just want to ask a question.
Yes councillor.
I think just, given, I mean, I understand and accept and complement the spirit of the motion, but just with the discussions that we've had, that speed humps may have already been incorporated into the into the Capital Works already, because if they may have been already, have gone through the traffic committee, perhaps rather than being quite so prescriptive about those amounts and as the acting CEO mentioned, improvement of street lighting, maybe we just need a little bit more detail about what we actually want to deliver in that space to make sure that we're allocating the right amount of money, because I would hate to be as prescriptive as this and then not satisfy what we're after. I'm wondering whether we actually just need a report that digs a little bit deeper.
Mr Mayor, and this is probably a question for the director of corporate services. Can we get an explanation as to why the unrestricted cash reserve is basically at zero at the moment? And just get more clarification, because I think we might be getting a little lost in translation about the reason why and like, you know, the, it seems like we've got no money, but we do from our understanding, but just get a clarification from the director please.
Thank you, through the chair, I'll just refer to the director of corporate services for that answer.
Through you, Mr CEO, there are two different issues here. One is cash availability, which is what we were talking about earlier. Another one is the results on the bottom line, the P and L, the result. If, obviously the reserves indicate what we have in cash, what we're holding in cash. So a lot of that money is restricted in terms of, it's been obtained and then we're holding it, but it's identified for a specific purpose, like seven eleven land acquisition in developing areas, like the environmental levy, like domestic waste provision. When you take, put that aside, because you can't use those funds for, other than what they were collected for specifically, then whatever balance is left, council may identify internal restrictions where it may say, I want to put four million dollars into the a property reserve to acquire properties and the like. And after that is done, anything left over is unrestricted cash. What I said earlier is that as of balance date, June thirty and as of thirty of September, we do have, we do have internal restrictions and it has increased from six point eight million end of June to twelve point five million end of September, but they are all internally restricted. So if you start wanting to allocate cash to other projects, well, it's, it's not there as at those dates. That isn't to say that it isn't coming in. And there are, I mean, we are owed monies, we have receivables that are yet to come in. We have, you know, outstanding rate and income and other things, sources of income to come in. So that will fluctuate month to month, so that's the cash side. Then there's the P and L, the result side, so if we incur expenses that are greater than what we budgeted or receive less income than what we budgeted, obviously that has a negative, a detrimental result on the bottom line, the P and L. And in reverse, if costs are reduced than what was budgeted or we get more income than what was budgeted. And just as, well, I've got the mic, in regard to the discussion with regard to getting budget information, we will be providing the councillors with every activity of council and the expenses and revenues by activity. So you will get the information for each area of council and each function of council in coming months, both for the current year and the upcoming budget.
Councillor Monahan?
Yes, just through the CEO, I have a further question. For argument's sake, if this funding for this motion were to be allocated from the unrestricted cash reserves, is that possible?
Yes, it is, basically you'd be identifying it as general fund and we will be putting a budget adjustment of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars as part of the next quarterly review.
Is everyone clear? So. So I guess councillors, what would you like to do?
Move that the motion be put.
Yeah, I just got, there's a legality issue just in a moment, so. So if you ask, so the point, the acting CEO to put a report on the availability of funds for implementation of the motion, so that should be a point three, or that should be a point by itself? Yep. Yeah, that can, that can come out, that's not relevant to the motion. Great. Okay, would the, would you like to write a reply councillor Restovski?
Yes, I'd actually like that line put back in, I believe that it is relevant, given that we're discussing preparing a report on the availability of funds for implementing the motion. It is entirely relevant that we have the availability of funds in each directorate.
Sorry councillor, you can move that when we get to the quarterly review and we're talking about the budget, because you're talking about a significant amount of work and this is about two one six eight. So just because, just because you're spending money doesn't say lead into doing a whole audit of a department. So happy for you to move it, but not as part of this motion, so I recommend you hold it until that point.
Good, that's fine.
Mr Mekka, sorry, I just have one final question. I'm just, just doesn't make sense to me that we're allocating funding, but then we're asking for a report about the funding.
Yeah, sorry, so the wording would then have to be, yeah, it'd have to be investigate funding for the implementation of the following. So instead of allocate, it'd have to be investigate. Yep. Thank you. And in closing, so councillors, would you like to write a reply? Oh, cool, all right. I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands, against, declare unanimous. And councillors, can I just say that that's a template of when you want to put a motion and get some funding, I think that's the template of how to do it. Investigate, get the report back, move on. All right, councillor, we'll just move back to plan zero one, because I think we have the information now that councillor Restovski recommended, so plan zero one, page forty four, tab one, recommendation on page forty four, quarterly report, clause four point six, variation development standards.
So I'll just remind the councillors that there was a question about ownership and it's been handed out now.
Through the chair, is that confidential?
Not particularly, we're just being appropriate. It doesn't have to go into comf, it's been handed out in open, the actual records of public records.
Councillor AJ is happy to move the motion as you had before?
Yes, I do.
Councillor Green, are you happy to second the motion as you did before? Are you happy to second the motion as you did before? All right, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands, against, declare unanimous. Next item is com zero two, grant, uh, page sixty-five, tab four, recommendation on page sixty-five. Grants and donations, community sponsorship, move councillor Green, second councillor Moon, any discussion?
Yes, I have a motion, which I'll let them put on the screen. Uh, while they're doing that, couple of, uh, questions, um. The scape bags for domestic and family abuse, uh, I believe in the, the project.
Councillor Rusevsky, so there's been a motion, that's moved. We need to see whether yours is a foreshadowed or an amended motion. And then, but before that, the mover would, should have the opportunity to speak first on their motion. Did you want to speak for your motion councillor Green?
Uh, look, I think in, uh, reviewing the, uh, projects that have been successful, uh, and that what they're looking to deliver, I have no problem with that and I commend the work of each of those organisations.
Hmm, great.
Can I actually move mine as an amendment to the, uh, motion?
Yes, I'll say that's an amended.
As a point two.
Yeah. Is the, would the mover like to adopt that as part of?
I just would have a question, um, going back to my days, um, in an NGO and acquitting many, many projects, that that would be, um, normal procedure in terms of acquitting a project. Like it's, it's a budget, uh, it's, uh, clearly what you're being funded to do and deliver. Um, unless maybe we have a briefing, uh, at one of, at a councillor briefing as to what the, uh, application looks like in terms of the budget that's submitted. And my understanding in my practice, what you submit for is what you acquit the, your project against. So all that information is actually all there. Um, do I want to, do I personally want to see it myself? No, because I know that staff, um, that, that's their, their role to ensure that, uh, monies are spent in the way that the grant has been, uh, provided.
So I am, so just before I go back to you, the, the, so councillor, are you saying before the approval of the grant or after, what do you exactly mean by which will be used?
You talk, you talk about my motion?
Yeah, you're.
After the approval. After the approval.
After the event.
Yeah, because we, we don't see any details about P and Ls. It'd be nice to have it in there, see how it's spent. I mean, we are elected officials, you've heard the, the, the motion or the discussion about, uh, unrestricted cash reserves. We need, we have a fiduciary duty to make sure that we're doing the right thing. A one-page P and L, for example, I mentioned the first one. Um, there's no co-contribution like the others. No criticism to any of these, it's just, I think it's prudent to have this for transparency for the community as well.
So you, so you're saying after the event? Yeah, so I'm saying after, so councillor, the process, they make an application. Councillor then approves it. You're saying after the monies have spent, that you want a breakdown of how that was spent after the fact, in actual?
Well, actually, I want a part of the, uh, papers. So if they had a little P and L, we were asking for ten thousand dollars. This is how we plan on spending it. It makes it easier to determine whether.
Right, so like a project, a project breakdown, a cost breakdown of the project versus a profit and loss statement?
The budget of the project?
Yeah, all right. Oh, just one sec, let me go councillor Hart, and then I just want to ask the staff a question.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, and this is a question for council staff as well. Um, uh, is that part of the, again, a breakdown or a budget of, um, of a, a grant application from an organisation, is that part of the grant application itself?
I'll refer that to the, uh, the CEO.
It, I'm just not sure I got the full context of the question, but I'll just refer straight to.
I think the, the context was, is that as part of the application process, is there a breakdown of expenses, costs, right? Um, as part of it, uh, proposed as part of that when they apply?
So I refer to the acting director of the community lifestyle and the granularity of that breakdown.
Sorry.
Thank you, through the acting CEO. Uh, I might deal with three separate points here if, if I could. Uh, the first relates to the application process and the application process requires, uh, all applications to provide audited financial statements to demonstrate that the organisation, it has the capacity to deliver on the project for which the funding submission is, or a request is provided. Uh, the second point in that is, uh, as part of the application process, a detailed budget is provided by the applicant and assessed by council staff. And the third point is that, um, all recipients are required to acquit the, uh, the grant at the end of the project. And that means providing proof points of spend to validate the, uh, the, the receipt of the grant.
Yeah. To the chair?
Uh, uh, councillor Rusevsky, through the mayor. Perhaps we can, uh, change point three to, um, that, that councillors receive a copy of each grant application, um, since that already provides that information.
That's my point exactly through the mayor. Um, we're voting on giving out money, but we have no transparency in where that money's going. Um, for example, you know, some of them have given us a good explanation, um, like the, um, the path to resilience and there's another one about, uh, charities, the heroes with ability really doesn't give us much of a breakdown on what, where the money's being spent. I've got no problem with it, happy to deliver it. Um, you know, the Diwali festival, no discussion on where the ten thousand's going. Um, that's all I want to see, so we can make the right decisions and keep everyone accountable.
So can we just make, so we, to achieve the objective that councillor Rusevsky would like, can we just have point three then just say, can I recommend, uh, that a copy of the, uh, applications be provided as an addendum to these reports going forward? Yeah, that, instead of point three.
Yeah, so that'll become point three.
That'll be, councillor Rusevsky, you happy with that? Yeah, call of the, uh, of the, um, grant application, just a copy of the grant application. Is the mover and seconder happy with that point?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yeah.
Yes. Councillor AJ, yes. Okay, wonderful, any councillor Hart, sorry. Councillor Moon, your microphone, please.
Just a question on that. What's the criteria being applied to give them that percentage? If you look at this one here, ten thousand dollars in thirty-eight thousand dollars, say forty thousand dollars, that's roughly twenty-five percent. What's the criteria years to say we're going to give you twenty-five percent?
This, through the chair, um, there was an excellent presentation at last week's councillors briefing on this. What I'll do is I'll have, uh, executive services share that again. I think it was one of the final presentations, I know everybody can't make those. But it talked, uh, indiscreet levels as to criteria. And I, I was asking the same question in relation to percentages. I don't think a percentage applies. I think, uh, co-contribution, um, i- is a discussion, but each of the categories has their own criteria. And I'll undertake to make sure that's shared with all the councillors.
Was that briefing session recorded? No?
Uh, the one we did in the boardroom.
That's not, no, the briefing session.
Yeah.
See, if it was recorded, we could have played it back.
Today, I, I think, um, the, the, the staff, um, I think, um, gave the due diligence of how they go through the process of each application and make sure that each applicant is meeting the set criteria by council. So I don't think they just approve grants for the sake of approving grants, you know? So all the due diligence were provided and, um, she did a good job. Um, is it Honda, Honda?
Javiria.
Okay, okay, all right. But last name is Honda, yeah? Oh, no, Honda, Honda, yes, okay.
If there is no further discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare it, you, uh, men, unanimous. Next item is com, uh, zero three, uh, page seventy-eight, tab five, the convention on page seventy-nine, revocation of the Kasula Powerhouse Arts Centre Board of Management Charter.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move a motion.
Yes, councillor Hart, what's your motion?
Um, that council one, retain the Kasula Powerhouse Arts Centre Board of Management Charter. Board of Management Charter, just basically take number one, but change retain to revoke. Um, point two, um, urgently review and update the charter. To be fit for purpose. And to complement the future direction of CPAC.
I think LPAC maybe, subject to what happens a bit later.
We'll see, uh, uh, sorry, not confidential, compliments. Um, and point three.
Compliments?
Compliments.
Compliments.
Compliments. The future direction of CPAC. Um, and point three, that council staff report back at the next council meeting. Um, with, uh, answers to the following, point A. The operational cost of running CPAC for this financial year. Uh, point B, the cost of each festival event and corresponding funding source for each. Sorry, get rid of festival, just event. Uh, C, number of visitors in the last five years. And D, the operating cost per visitor.
So, your second.
No, I just wanted to.
The.
Recommendation, just noting that the next, um, council meeting's in three weeks' time. Whether or not that might be pushing it a little bit, that's all.
Yeah, and, um, yeah, that's probably a bit too tight. Um, but just councillor Hart, um, in the spirit of what I said before with regards to budgetary items, I think, um, A and B should form part of, uh, the quarterly review or another, in a proper budgetary discussion regarding, um, very similar, I think point C and D are relevant. But I just think that to, to make them, um.
If the second is amenable, sure.
Yep. All right.
Um. Um. Yeah, and change, uh, not next council meeting, report back as soon as practicable.
Or February. Yep, once, we'll get to you in a moment, councillor. Yeah, okay. Um, did you want to speak for your motion councillor Hart?
Just a question.
Sorry.
Sorry.
I'll get to you in a moment councillor, I'll get to, I've got a Hart, then Mick, then Green, and then you, Deputy Mayor.
Uh, yeah, so, um, uh, I think we're in a position where, um, CPAC, uh, uh, is going to be redefined, um, and changed as, as we can see the, um, I think the next round of business is renaming CPAC. Um, and that new vision and future, I think us as councillors, we, um, we need to make sure that we have the finger on the pulse, um, making sure that, um, the vision that is being, um, presented at CPAC is something that aligns with, um, what we want as elected governing body. Um, uh, and I'll leave it at that for now.
Councillor Green?
Uh, probably my point might, uh, probably go into the renaming, but I just wanted to remind people that when, uh, uh, I think, uh, previous mayor, um, Mark Latham, uh, under the plebiscite, uh, it was, uh, Kasula Powerhouse Arts Centre. So it would be imperative of us, if you're going to change the name, that it's the location that's being changed. It should be Liverpool Powerhouse Arts Centre is what should, should be there.
Can we leave that to the next item, please?
Uh, 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 look, I'm happy to do that. Uh, the second point, if I could add a point four, please. I would like, uh, for, uh, investigate, um, or explore, uh, I'd like to see, uh, the powerhouse, uh, listed, uh, as a her, as heritage item. Because it is an important cultural icon.
I think it's already heritage.
Is it already heritage listed? I had a look, it didn't come up. Can we review that? Because I, I had a look for the heritage list.
Well, you, maybe I'll have it in a few minutes, but yes.
New South Wales on the website.
Local heritage, not, not state heritage.
Oh, okay.
There's a whole different, there's a whole different bar to jump from state heritage. Because I remember last time we had to get the courthouse state heritage and that was a big thing, but. Um, being that. All right.
Flaking with.
Yeah.
Mayor Latham.
Um. Yeah, okay, yours, that was it, yeah, all right, um, Deputy Mayor?
Oh, yes, simply can, uh, you wonder if you can change three eight? The number of visitors in the last five years, could we change that to the number of visitors in each of the last five years?
Hmm, each of. Are you happy with that?
That'd give you a better idea, it may relate to events and so on, which this, as it is, it doesn't.
Yep.
Yeah, that's fine, that was just bad wording on my part.
Cool, all right. Now, um, um, I'm just thinking, so if this hap, should this be successful, then we have to appoint people onto the board? Because what is it, is, um.
Uh, we're reviewing the, uh.
Yeah.
We're reviewing the charter, so I think if, once that report comes back, then it's probably, we're in a position to appoint people to that board.
No, I think considering where we are in the year, I can move with that, but yes.
Sorry, through the chair, is the number of visitors in each of the last five years, the operating cost per visitor? Or is that the revenue?
Re, re, operating costs. It's not a, it's not a, uh, income generating. It's not a business where it generates revenue per visitor. Yeah.
Okay, that's interesting. I thought we ran a business out of there.
Run an arts centre.
Don't we run the restaurant out of there as a councillor?
That's a different. Completely different. Kettle of fish.
Okay, that's a nice fish.
They do serve nice fish there. All right.
Sorry, just, just one thing on that point that councillor Moon mentioned. We, we would be getting some revenue from higher costs and whatnot, shouldn't we say net operating costs per visitor?
Yes, on that, I'll kind of go back to what I said previously about Miller. Miller, was it Miller? That we talk about, when, that budgetary stuff, I think it's best left into the budget, because ultimately what this, this is. Look, I, I know slightly different, because this is, this is now really looking into, we started off with a charter and now we're doing a full financial audit of the powerhouse, which is, say, no. Let's keep at the charter and then let's move on to there. Here's to that. So, yeah, so hold that off until councillor Rusevsky, until we get to, um, the budget, budgetary stuff.
Given that, uh, reasoning, Mr. Mayor, then shouldn't three be deleted entirely and be dealt with in budgetary matters like the motion I attempted to move earlier this evening?
Well, I already deleted two items, you could, you can maybe say B, right? But, uh, A, A, A is. Hmm, yeah.
Follow, following, following the same. Follow, following, following the same line of.
Yeah, that's why, that's why those other two points have been removed.
Yeah, well, three should ought to, ought to be removed as well and, and placed into a budgetary motion. If it's, if it's, if it's a budgetary item, uh, that, that you just raised, um, shouldn't it be kept to the, um, substance of the motion as I attempted to move earlier this evening?
Yeah, which is why I said that, let me just, let me just see councillor Hart.
Um, uh, through the mayor, councillor Monahan, I have no idea how, um, the number of visitors in each of the last five years has got anything to do with the budget. And point B is a pretty basic calculation of how many visitors there were, which is why it's been qualified by point A over the cost of running the place.
Through the mayor, through the mayor.
Hold on, hold on, the, the, um, if we, um.
Through the mayor, it wasn't I that raised it as a, being a budget matter, it was in fact the mayor that raised it as a budget matter and
Sure, look.
I identified the fact that a similar motion that was attempted to be moved early out this evening, this afternoon, rather.
So, I, I would, I would say on to councillor Monahan's point, I think point A is relevant, but point B goes into the, the, point B goes into, because point A links into the whole charter and purpose direction. So I think point B, A is relevant, so if we can hold off point B, uh, as it starts getting to a financial operating cost, I think that's better done as the budget point.
So shouldn't it just be three, not three A, three and three A? Just the, the same.
Yes, now there's no other.
Your motion.
As there's no other sub clause, I think that drafting makes sense, so if you can remove point A, get rid of the.
Change the council staff report back at the February twenty twenty-five council meeting with the number of visitors in each of the last five years.
Yep. Yeah, so, and I would remove the words council staff, because it says that council one, do that two. And so if we remove the words council staff from the beginning. Say council, and yet remove A, there's no need, there's no need for A, just make that a point three. Three. Tell you what, our drafting is going to be pretty good, I reckon, no, no, hold on, wait, remove the word council, no, my council retain. No, 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 don't do that, don't, don't put council in front of every sentence, please, keep council at the top. And then remove the word council from, which is why we write that council. Yeah, beautiful, that's better. And what do we call the two little dots on each other? What are they called? I forgot their names. Semicolons after that council, please. Wonderful, and does that mean we need to cap, does every sentence then start with a capital or is it a? Well, I know my grammar is not a hundred percent. Councillor Monahan?
Yes.
Do we want a grammar lesson or should we just proceed with the meeting?
Um, you brought point.
Because that, that's a colon, not a semicolon, um, and there should be a semicolon after the end of each clause and an and at the end of two.
And a. Do what he said.
And a full stop at the end of three, um, but, I mean, we're taking up quite a lot of time this evening, I think we should probably wrap it up.
I'll take councillor Monahan said the motion should be put. Oh, the interpretation, I'll, I'll, I'll put the motion, uh, all those in favour, please raise your hands. I'll declare unanimous. Next item is COM zero four, page eighty-one, tab six, the convention on page eighty-two, reimagining of the Casula Powerhouse Art Centre to Liverpool Powerhouse, home of the creative industries.
Look, I'll, I'll.
Move deputy mayor, second to councillor Monahan, sorry.
Going to move the, move as per the book, except, um, delete in, uh, point one. Delete with the subheading home of the creative industries and simply call it to Liverpool Powerhouse.
Art Centre.
Art Centre, yes, sorry. Liverpool Powerhouse Art Centre.
What was passed at the plebiscite?
What plebiscite was this?
That was the one that was apparently, uh, with the plebiscite was, uh, must be, uh, when council, well, according to port, uh, Liverpool City Council purchased the site and the residents of Liverpool voted by plebiscite to repurpose the building as an art centre, pa- the powerhouse regional art centre. So, um, I think, you know, in terms of, of, of history, re- retain, and, and the fact, I don't even know if we can actually even change the outcome of a plebiscite. Um, it would, um, be Liverpool, uh, Powerhouse Art Centre.
Can you just, sorry, what page does it say that?
On page eighty-two, I'm sorry, uh, that's in, uh, the second paragraph. Oh, sorry, the first paragraph, I'm sorry, uh, the second sentence.
All right, councillor Green, the, uh, I, well, I've got to councillor Monahan first, the, uh, the branding is, uh, one thing and adding words, removing words, you know, I, I, I think before we make a decision on any alteration to what the staff recommending is, just to get their understanding of why they would want to do that. Um, because I imagine they put a fair bit of, I would, I would not respect any councils here, but they probably put more into it than, more than what we have. Um, that's one point, the second point, uh, and I think if we can refer to the CEO on that, the second point, uh, there would be. We'd have to exercise extreme caution in that had, if there are plebiscite, um, what that plebiscite was about and what the actual question was before we could proceed, because if the question said name it this, that's one thing, if the plebiscite was repurpose it to an art centre, then, then, I'm curious about when we actually had a plebiscite, I'd be very, very interested to hear that.
Apparently it was under the term of, uh, Mister Mark Latham.
Yeah, so I think, um, I'll refer this here on the first point. Um, and then I think we have to, I would say we'd have to defer this to get to find out about that, uh, that plebiscite, right? But over to you.
Thank you, through, through the chair, a couple of things, I guess, they, if we take in context the questions about utilisation and the rationale on page eighty-three as described by Clara in the paper. Um, moving away from the art centre actually becomes a more inclusive description of what the facility might be, and I might just ask Clara to come to the microphone if you could, please. Just to go over that rationale again, um, and again, the, the context of councils' questions in relation to foot traffic over five years. If one overlays this approach considers asset utilisation in project twenty-six or otherwise, um, then these are attempts to make more money out of assets. But in relation to the rationale about removing the two words art centre, Clara, if you could give us any advice on that?
Through the acting CEO, um, the rationale regarding the art centre naming was, uh, purely to provide a, a more inclusive, um, venue for, uh, broader arts engagement, so across creative industries. The art centre, um, model was, uh, quite archaic in its development and this is to align to policies that are existing now, speaking to creative industries across state and federal, um, items, so, uh, it was a, um, suggestion on the basis of a consultant that we had engaged that it would be a more encompassing name for the centre.
Thank you for that.
Do we have, so I probably should have said this before you said that, do we have any further information with regards to the actual plebiscite? In particular, what was the actual question?
I think that's really, um, Mister Mayor, that is why this, um, this particular item needs to be deferred so that we can get the background, the history, I, I mean, I wasn't, I wasn't aware of the plebiscite until somebody mentioned it to me, um, so, you know, in understanding, uh, what the plebiscite was about and I, I don't know, we, we, we can even change, um, make those changes in relation to the plebiscite, I don't know. So we, that needs to be explored as well, which I think you also alluded to.
Yeah, just before there's an official move or deferral, which I'll, but I think there, we do have some information from staff, which I'll refer to the CEO.
Thank you, through the chair, uh, and also through the chair, the, on point one, the option was Casula Powerhouse Art Centre. You can't revert back to Liver Power, it's never, it's never been known as Liverpool Powerhouse Art Centre, so it can't revert. And there's, the staff are saying that the words art centre shouldn't be part of it, so the original motion, subject to it being deferred, should probably stand while we clarify that. But I'll pass over to the acting director of community and lifestyles for information about a historical plebiscite in Liverpool.
Through the acting CEO, the plebiscite was dated nineteen eighty-five, uh, I can confirm that and I can also confirm that the plebiscite was, um, to, uh, repurpose the, uh, the, the building for an art centre. It wasn't a plebiscite to name the art centre.
That was before Latham's time, then eighty-five. Are you happy, so we don't have to defer that then?
Um.
Yeah, I'll fix the, I'll fix the wording in a second.
I know I can't revert back, um, in terms of, uh, re- repurposing the name to Liverpool Powerhouse, uh.
It can be, we can have revert back to Liverpool Powerhouse because that's what it was called, and then the subheading comes in under that, yep.
So. So just going back, the first thing, so we're happy with the plebiscite, I think from my point of view, that's clarified, so to councillor Green, so then, um. The. So then again, the question then becomes is, the words art centres, councillor Monahan, you're asking be added versus so you've got two points here, councillor Monahan, which is one about adding the words art centre and removing the subheading, right? Um, with respect with what the, uh, staff just, uh, mentioned to us, no. Um.
Might, I suggest, um, I don't feel comfortable in completely losing the, uh, focus on art.
Hmm.
Um, so could we, could it not be Liverpool, uh, home of the, of, uh, the arts and creative industries? So that arts is still there, because arts takes into, it's not only like paintings, drawings, it's sculpture. It's, it's quite broad as well, um, creative industries, you're talking about, um, digital, AI, you're, you're a whole range of other kinds of things, so I, I think if, you know, I'd be sa- I'd be, I think it's, it's, it, um, it would diminish if, if the word arts was, um, was, was taken out.
So art can add so much to it, so you, so you're saying then is Liverpool Powerhouse, home of the, home of the arts and creative industry, so adding basically, as per the recommendation, except for adding the word arts.
Yes, please.
All right, I, um, to the.
Can you just hold on one moment, councillor AJ, is the no, councillor Harald didn't move, did he? No, did councillor, did you, oh. Hart or Harald, who moved that? No, you moved the other one, no councillor Harald moved this, deputy mayor moved this one. You moved the previous one, councillor, the other powerhouse motion, so. De- de- deputy mayor, are, are you happy with, um, are you, are you happy with that?
Yes, just, although I'd like to add a little bit, not to this, just a bit of history. Do you remember that used to be, they just called the powerhouse years ago? And it was basically a place where you picked up things and exchanged things with the community, this is back in two thousand and four. Yeah, that's right, it was recycling, and then the, uh, premier Bob Carr.
Recycling centre, sorry, okay, my fault, sorry.
Premier Bob Carr gave Liverpool, would fund Liverpool council to the tune of about seven million dollars. And at the time, I was very anti that because council put up a special rate variation to get six million dollars to fix roads. And so what we did, we basically diverted that six million dollars for special rate variation to the powerhouse to match the grant from the state government on the condition that it was an art centre, so you can't remove the words art.
Yeah, he said yes, with a explanation, is the second are happy with that? Yes, okay, councillor AJ?
No, no, I was just gonna, um, commend the deputy mayor for what he said, and I can see the staff is nodding that it would be like appropriate to market it, so is that, is that cool, is that the energy I'm getting? All right, done, done, yes.
All right, just a quick one, um, the last point, um, I just want a little bit of clarification. This will be taken from operational savings, what, what does that look like? It's very ambiguous.
I'll refer to the CEO.
It, it's ambiguity can be clarified by the they will not do other things in relation to signs and their budget for, um, fixtures, there were some improvements into the, um, the welcoming area that won't occur now, and we will redirect that money. So the bu- the budget won't be increased, it'll be taken from within, we'll find efficiencies in how we do that.
Is that discretion available for, um, other items going forward for motions?
Yeah, yeah, I think, uh, if I look at all the um, resolutions in relation to powerhouse today, it's about how best we utilise it and how best we spend our coin to what we do there, um, because it's certainly an asset that is under discussion.
Councillor, no, McNair, no?
I was just thinking of the last, um, question from councillor Stevsky, that's okay, this is a, a, a recommendation that's been made by staff. That's, it's okay, thank you, we can't, uh, put Liverpool Powerhouse on the chimney, can we?
I'll refer to the CEO.
Um, that's a very, very timely question, councillor, because there's some issues with the chimney. But I'll, I'll speak about that later on.
Sure. All right.
I can forecut, we've had, we've had.
Pull off the band-aid, I reckon.
We've had some structural engineers look at the chimney and there may be a imminent reduction in its size.
How imminent, I guess?
We're just having a look now as to, um, how imminent it needs to be from a safety perspective, but our advice is that the top end, the top thirty metres of the chimney is in a position where we would not replenish it, we'd take it down, keep the integrity of the chimney, repurpose the taken down part of the chimney within the forecourt of CPAC and display it in a different way.
I- is it a, is it an imminent safety problem where you might be in a situation where you have to shut down parts of the Casula Powerhouse?
It's not that imminent, there, there's, uh, ranges of imminency and it's not one of those, uh, we've just got, it's like any structural defect, they, they, they talk about uh, some challenges with it and it won't last, uh, another hundred years, but, um, there's no risk to safety, otherwise we would have taken it down already.
Does anybody want any details on that, or we can, uh, might save us a lot. It's actually on our branding, the chimney, but that will be a different thing. All right, if there's no further, um, discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands against, I declare it unanimous. Next item is, uh, COM zero five, page eighty-seven, record, tab seven, recommendation page eighty-eight.
Over, um, motion?
Uh, yes, councillor, what's your motion?
I'll let them, uh, put them up on the screen while they're doing that. I'll let them put them up on the screen. While they're doing that. I was just looking at the items in that, and we're spending one point six million dollars of ratepayers' money on a single event that generates a hundred and ninety-four thousand nine hundred. Now, considering the situation we find ourselves in, I don't think that's financially prudent. More importantly, some of the charges, we're charging four hundred and fifty dollars per day for a major event for a food truck. There's no information on what that includes. Now, looking at those rates, if we compare those rates to other councils, the Assyrian Festival in Fairfield was charging nineteen hundred dollars for a food van. The Italian Festival in Leichhardt was charging eleven hundred dollars for a food van. And both of these fees don't include electricity. Now, we probably need to invest in our infrastructure by having electricity pits all along Macquarie Street that can be opened with a special key, where the food vans can simply plug in for their power. Now, at the moment, these food operators have to hire a generator and fuel it, costing them around five hundred dollars a day on top of the high fee that we're charging. I think we'll probably be the only council if we invested in such an infrastructure, and we could probably charge fifteen hundred dollars a day all inclusive of electricity, because I won't have to pay for that power. And it's also a health hazard with all these leads and fuel cans all over the place, plugging in the generators, the noise that's associated with all of that.
Just, just one moment councillor, before you, kind of because you're now speaking for your motion. Do you have a second or for your motion? Second, a councillor, Kenee. Yep. Now, please go ahead.
So I think, I think I've pretty much said it all.
So. So you're saying basically, if you had, if we had done capital works and had more power in the mall, so they can just plug in, then we could charge more. So should you add a point then talking about getting a report back on, on for next year's budget improvement, capital improvements to the mall to allow? Keep it vague, or you want to keep it vague, it can be prospective, but yeah, all right. I'll pass over the CEO.
Thank you for the chair. Councillor Rostewski, good point. Comp six deals with revenues under a project called Project Twenty-Six. This is exactly the kind of thing that the revenue stream in P twenty-six, Comp six talks to. And absolutely, we had Clara and Tuna Bono in the office last week talking about how we map to Canterbury Bankstown Council for Ramadan, for example, which is a good measure. And we are, we believe we're undercooking our revenue assumptions based on the service provision we provide, the quality of our amenity, and electricity supply is absolutely on the radar as we move towards enhancements in Macquarie Mall and Street. And we would look to make that a focus of the revenue stream in Comp six.
Yes. So I think that if you, so that point three, I report back to council, so report back capital, report back on the cost, on potential, on potential capital improvements to the mall. So remove the word capital from the beginning. So report back, please. I report back on potential capital improvements to Macquarie Mall to improve operational efficiency for next year's, don't remove it all, for next year's capital works programme. Are you happy with that, councillor Rostewski? Cool. But yes, is a secondor happy with that? Councillor Kenee? Yep. Councillor McNair?
I have a question, just in relation to point one. In the spirit of collaboration and transparency, I wonder if we invite not only the past food trucks and, sorry, I can't see the other words, market stall holders, but also make sure that there's an open invitation to anyone else who may want to be involved in that, so that it's not just the people we've used in the past. I mean, other people who have food trucks in other areas may have some, you know, information that that is, will benefit that discussion. So I just don't, by all means, let's invite those people who've already worked with us, but let's have an open invitation to people to seek feedback on those proposed fees.
Yep.
Would we have time in three weeks to have those reports back? Because it's saying to the next council meeting, should we go to February?
I'm good with the change to the February meeting. There's only three weeks.
Yep. So rather, so if we've got a point to remove next council, change that to February?
Can we maybe add in to point one somewhere, and other interested parties? Just to cover anyone else who may want to be involved in that meeting, people who've considered working with us.
Yep. Is moving secondor happy with that? Yep. Or any other speakers for or against?
Just a question, Mr Mayor.
Yes, Deputy Mayor.
We spent a lot of money on that Macquarie Mall. How come we haven't got power outlets along there? Surely somebody should have thought of that at the time?
We were told there was enough power when we did it. But I think it's going to be bigger than expected, in my simple terms. That's the answer. Yep. And the thing is.
Sorry, sorry, through the, through the chair, councillor, the draw is bigger now. It was, it needs to be retrofitted to, for the power increase, simple as that. And it's, it was like, it was fit for purpose at a time. Yep. Before we were holding these kind of events at this scale and with this power draw.
Yep. The I don't know if I should bring that one up. Yeah, I'll just make comment councillors on that. The the process, yeah, the first event that we held in the mall, we couldn't get stall holders. It was extremely challenging. And that was for the Blessed Knights, and we almost had to beg stall holders to come. Where now, it's a completely different scenario. They all are, they're fighting over not getting the whole four weeks, and now it has to be split. And there's a preference obviously for local businesses as well, and so on and so forth. So, yeah. It's a much different situation than we were three years ago, but I think definitely needs to, there's definitely room for revising the fees now that the model has been proven. All right. Any further discussion? I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands against a declare unanimous. Next item is COM zero six, page ninety-five, tab eight, recommendation page ninety-six, changes to community facility and sports grant hire policies. Councillor McNair?
Happy to move with an additional point and a question that may produce another additional point. So my addition, do you want to hear my additional point first? I reckon you probably know it.
Add the point, then second before you ask your question, please.
The additional point is that for council to open up an EOI process for local slash regional slash state and national sporting and community organisations regarding working with council through a formalised relationship such as, but not limited to our point one, MOU to collaborate on facility improvements and other initiatives to benefit the community and council. And point two, lobbying all levels of government for funding for these initiatives.
Do you want to chuck international in there while you're at it?
Chuck international in there as well. Let's do that, sorry.
Near now. Aim high, we're global city.
Sorry, just, yeah, if you put that up, where it says local, regional, state, national and international, we'll put that, may as well put that up the top as well, because that'd be fantastic. And I may add another point, but I might get a secondor.
Is there a secondor? Councillor Amun?
Can I ask a question of staff, please? So this is a deferred item from previous, and I just wanted to ask. I noticed that, you know, that we deferred this to get some more feedback from our hirers. And I noticed that we really, that didn't happen as successfully as I would like. And, you know, the, the, the idea that nobody gave feedback is not consistent with what I'm hearing as a councillor and I have had discussions regarding. So I'm wondering whether or not we may, it may extend the process a little bit, but whether or not it's, I think it's important that we make sure that every, every current hirer has been contacted, whether that's by email with confirmation or by phone in the next appropriate timeframe, week or two, to make, with a summary provided to them of how these changes are going to affect their current situation, and letting them know exactly how to provide feedback. And when we've done that, then we know that everybody knows what's going to happen and has the opportunity to feed back. And whether that means we need to extend the public exhibition to eight weeks or six weeks, bearing in mind it's a Christmas period. I think that would be okay as well. So it's not, not holding anything up, but just making sure before we press go, that everybody absolutely understands what the changes mean and has that very detailed opportunity to provide feedback. And then if they do, they do, and if they don't, they don't.
Thank you. Through the chair, cognisant of our issues last year in relation to community consultation in relation to footpath. Christmas is a time where we can't do that. But I will pass over generally just for a comment from the director Community and Lifestyle in relation to that extended process. And I've just got a quick comment on point six as I return.
Through the acting CEO. I might just clarify the process that council undertook to try and engage hirers, current hirers on the, on the proposed changes, if I may. And there was three methods that we used to do that. The first was direct email to all hirers that are current hirers on a perpetual agreement. We undertook some online faced, or forums, town hall forums, where the policy changes were presented. Two different forums, one was for community group hirers in community centres, and the other one was for sporting group hirers on sporting fields. And the third way, method was through our socials and invited feedback via email. So three different methods. In respect to the changes to the policy, not a lot of feedback. Most of the feedback that was provided in those forums related to operational items and some enhancements and improvements on things like invoicing processes, facility cleaning, upgrade requirements and those sorts of things that are outside of the scope of the policy changes as they're presented.
So we're confident that everybody who has a hiring agreement with us at the moment is aware of the changes and how these changes are going to affect them?
Through the acting CEO, what I can confirm is everyone was sent information regarding these, these changes. Whether they were received or read, I can't confirm. What I can say is that in terms of the number of people that turned up to the online forums, there wasn't a great deal of response to those, and, and only smatterings of, of feedback via email.
Thank you. I guess what I'm trying to, and I know I keep saying the same thing, but I'm just trying to make sure that, you know, if, if we have the time and the ability to be able to reach out with a, with a direct email or a phone call again with a, you know, so that we know that the person has received it, you know, a read receipt or, you know, a read receipt would be more appropriate, I guess. I, I, you know, I think that if we're not certain that everybody knows this is about to happen, we're going to hear about it in twenty-nine days when it comes back off public exhibition.
Through the chair, I think what councillor McNair is trying to say is some of these organisations that hire these halls either have non-speaking English barriers, they don't use emails as such. So maybe a point of interaction with them will probably change a lot of things. Like, as we, myself and, and the acting director for Community Lifestyle, we've had numerous community organisations approach us and I've dealt with them. We needed interpreters of such. So what councillor McNair is saying, we need to make sure that these people know, because they're, they're permanent people that use our facilities, they got licences, they hire, they got agreements, but they have a language barrier. Are we able to communicate with these people? And do they know what the changes are?
Thank you, councillor. We understand the intent of councillor McNair, and we'll make sure all efforts are made to represent the opportunity to all members of the community and community groups from whatever culture they come from and non-English speaking background included. We'll undertake to do that.
And, and to your point, Mr Acting CEO, we are coming into the Christmas period, so I would not like us to to be in that position again. So if we need to extend that public display, because, you know, the last thing we want is for people to be contacted in, you know, twenty-one days' time, and say you've got seven more days to respond. I'd be happier that they had a bit longer, if that's necessary.
Understood. And just in relation to point six, Mr Chair, we should just be a new line there underneath B, in adherence to council's unsolicited proposal process guide. So that's a new one, it's not, it's not part of B. It starts with in, it's a new line, it's not, it's not C. Just go to, take in down, the word in. Yep, take it down. It's a new line in itself. It's not, it's not, it's not C. Leave it, leave it as a sentence. In adherence with council's unsolicited proposal process guide. Sorry? Sorry? Sorry, through the general count.
I was sorry, just offering the point of view that we, the proposal is that we are soliciting an arrangement rather than it being unsolicited.
You're saying basically in the process of doing this, that is soliciting therefore?
I think, sorry, I think the intent of this is to make it known that international, national, state, regional and local sporting and community organisations can approach council about how to collaborate on participating in, building partnerships in new initiatives. So if a, an example would be if a large company wanted to partner with the state government and Liverpool council on a major infrastructure investment, that we would make it known that we have a avenue to do it, and where that would fall would be in a unsolicited proposal. All we're doing is, I'm basically saying Liverpool council is open to the suggestion that you would come and partner with us here. That's where I was going with it.
That's, that's exactly right. And, and, and in those big arenas, like you were speaking, those type of things, and also from our, you know, long-term community sport hirers who, you know, have some club funding that they want to use to improve the services at council's facilities in partnership with council and things like that, just to make that that process a little bit, a little bit more inviting.
Yeah, if I can add on to that, when we had Western Vest, we had obviously the council component, but then organisations could put in, and it became a question of which of those organisations could council support? And we couldn't support anyone because why would we support them over another person, another group? Going through this process allows us to say, you know, you know, here we are at the beginning of our term. Group X that has been, have been at the sporting field for many, many years. They have this grand plan, and they'd like us to work with them to lobby federal state government to go and do something on this. If we have a process where they, we've allowed everybody that opportunity to come to us with their plans, should we accept, say, yep, we're on board with that, then we can lobby together. So if a Western vest has come up again, then we can all go in there. And that's, obviously there's community groups that want to do that. There are heaps of projects. I think it's a, um, i- it's a good thing.
Thank you. Uh, just through the mayor again. So what, what it essentially says is that we are open for business, for majors to come in from, from international up to otherwise and small sporting groups to come and talk to council about how we can partner on building great sporting infrastructure. That's what we're saying. And the guide that I use, or the draft guide that I use is, is written for, is reflected in the resolution.
Deputy Mayor?
Question. So looking, the way I understand is the maximum period of lease is three years. Is that correct?
Oh, that's a question.
Uh, I'll revert over to the acting director. I understand it's five years, but that's three years. It's only in relation to, um, uh, community facilities licence agreement, but I'm sure the director has the full ambit of licence agreements ready for us.
Through the acting CEO, the current process for community facilities is a maximum licence period of five years. Permanent hires are able to enter into an agreement, sorry, for three years and permanent hires are able to enter into an agreement for two years. The proposal is to extend that to a five-year period to give them longevity and some sort of, uh, ability to, to guarantee their continued operation.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, I was asked actually by sporting groups, uh, is three years the maximum? And they previously had longer than that. And there were others that were saying in order for them to put money and effort into something, they need more than five years. So I assume that reading this, I've got the wrong idea. It's only three years, but it's actually five years. But do we have more than five years? For instance, if somebody, and I understand this says there, the maximum is 21 years. But, you know, if, if you're going to have an international organisation come here and spend millions of dollars, surely they should need a longer period of time than three or five years.
Thank you, councillor. That's bang on. Um, and, and what we are trying to do by attracting those kind of players is be absolutely flexible in our response to those things. Uh, it'd be crazy to prohibit, uh, major investment by not allowing them to get a return on their investment by a shorter lease period. And that's something we would take, um, uh, with the advice of council and negotiate.
Any further discussion?
Yes, I, I have a full shadowed motion. I'll put it up on the screen. Um, seeing as, I, I agree with a lot of this stuff, but from my discussions with, um, a lot of the community operators.
So councillor, just before you speak for your motion, can we just get it on the screen please?
Should be, uh, defer the motion and council write to.
So I'm just thinking, um, we've just kind of gone through all that. Have, do we? So have we not done this in the motion calling for this in a way?
Uh, councillor Ostevsky, through the, um, mayor, I can we make this part of the substantive motion? I, I don't see why we can't walk and chew gum at the same time. Because it's going on exhibition, you're doing an A O I, you can do your round table as well if you want. If the mover and seconder amend will, of course.
Yeah. So we say, what include? So what's point one? Can we just go for a sec please? Go down please. Proceed to 28 days exhibition. Okay. So question is, number one, when are we going to do, when is this 28 day exhibition, noting what you said before? CEO about, acting CEO about, um, the Christmas period. Because it's probably, this is not the time to do 28 days. So we should probably, let's clean, let's clean that up if we can. Twenty-eight days from now is pretty much Christmas, yeah. So, so say from, proceed to 28 probably from the first of February. Perfect. Which means it's going to come back to the end of March council meeting. Uh, um, now, if we do... All right.
Maybe. I think. No, I was going to say, I think point seven, you know, articulates almost what I was trying to say before to ensure that we contact everybody who is a current hire. I'm happy that we contact previous hires as well. Um, so that hasn't been included in the motion yet. So I'm happy to, to work with this point, to have that included, to make sure that everybody who has an interest in the change is contacted and we can, we can show that they have been.
So I think remove the word defer.
Actually, um, just call it defer commencement of the public exhibition until we write to the.
Just if you the, the, the smoother way of doing it is that you start the exhibition, you can write to them, notifying the exhibition's going to happen, it's going to happen. So I think it's, um, should I? Do we say write to the clubs, right? Um, uh, prior to the commencement of the exhibition happening?
Uh, Mr Mayor, I, again, councillor Ostevsky through the mayor, like I, I think it might be good to have the public exhibition, um, while during the period that we write to these clubs and get them at a round table and then, you know, council, uh, staff can present to all these stakeholders and, you know, this is what we're offering, this is what we're presenting and here's your chance to give feedback in the next 28 days.
Hmm. But I guess if we get, like, considering where, where we are now, like, say if we're going to start on the first of February, the letter can go out in the last week of Jan. And then saying, hey, commence, giving them the whole 28 days to get to there. And having the round table as part of that process as well. So if we can put that in English? You can just change point, point seven?
I think just change. For commencing the public exhibition, um, council writes to 200.
Yeah, yeah. So remove the word defend, defer commencement, so prior to starting com- public consult. Prior to the startment, starting of the consultation period. Councillor McNally, are you gruntled with that?
Not gruntled yet, no. Um, so prior to the start of the consultation period, council, I know I'm being nitpicky, but can we write contact the rather than writes to so that we can be sure that we get to them in one way or another? And I just want to ask a question because it's not my number. Um, the 200, is that, is that a ballpark or is that definitely you have a list of 200? I just don't want to miss anybody. Yeah, I think I'll just take the number out if that's okay.
Councillor Ostevsky, where did you get that 200 from, if I can ask?
I'd be happy with current and previous.
Uh, I, I think that councillor Ostevsky got it from, uh, page 99 where it says that we'd contacted more than 200 current or previous hires. And really the response back on Zoom meetings was, I think, 18 and 12 respectively. And there's no real way of determining whether that 12 also consisted of that 18 figure. So really at most you're going to have is a 15% input, could be in fact less. Because you could have the same organisations dialing into both, for example, is the way I understood the reading of it. So, yeah, that's, that's where the 200 figures come from.
That's good. Now, thank you, councillor.
And I just think, and I'm sure we've caught it in the spirit of the, all of this discussion, but for anyone who doesn't want to come to the round table discussion, that we make sure that they're clear on how they can give their feedback as well, e- even if they don't want to be part of that round table. Now I'm gruntled.
Thank you. I'll now, uh, is there a seconder? Where's the seconder? Yep. A seconder, can you? All right, wonderful. All right, I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declared carried. Councillor, I now call a recess until 5:40. Thank you. Next item is corp 01, page 101, tab nine, recommendation on page 101. Tabling annual procurement interest returns for councils designated persons.
Just one question, where's com 07?
In the addendum, in the addendum.
So com, yeah, com 07 is, um, listed in the agenda um, that was provided, uh, last week, but it's not in the.
It's addendum booklet four.
All right. Is there, oh, I can't see the, no, it's on the side. Oh, I can't see that. Thank you. Sorry.
Yep, this one. Councillor. It's not confidential now. All right. Do we have a mover? Move councillor Hart, second councillor Moon, any discussion? Yep, councillor Ostevsky.
Do we, do we know who those, uh, non-returning councillors are?
Yeah, to CEO.
Yes, uh, thank you, councillor. Just through the mayor, I'll revert to the general councillor.
Uh, the answer is yes, councillor. I, I do know, um, and, and I can r- rather than try to recite the four accurately, it's probably better if I circulate something.
Any further discussion? I'll put the me, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, declared unanimous. Next item is corp 02, page 105, tab 10 with recognition 105, complaints and compliments management policy. Councillor McNaul?
Um, Mr Mayor, I'm happy to move it with a, um, a second point. And my second point would be that, um, we organise a workshop sometime in the new year around the, um, policy development and consolidation with a staged approach, including, and then there are five dot points. Inception. The next point is checkpoint. The next point, final briefing prior to consultation. The next point is community consultation. And the next, the final point is consideration for adoption. I'm happy to speak to this if I get a seconder.
Second councillor Moon. Yes, councillor?
Thank you. And I thank staff for the work on the policy that's presented to us today. And this kind of also relates to uh, C E B P 01. These policies are quite, you know, they, they will be interrelated. Um, and I think that, you know, the fact that they're now separated, um, does speak to the, uh, the confusion and convolution of our policies at this point. And so I would really like us to work together and for the sake of new councillors as well in bringing the, the, um, policies, um, together. But before we do that, you know, rather than having, you know, we've got lots and lots of reports and policies and things to read now. Just going on that journey a little bit earlier on as councillors, so, you know, rather than it sort of having a, a quick briefing and then coming to a community consultation afterwards. And I know we can still change it when it comes back for adoption. Um, but I think that this would be a better, um, give us all a better understanding of how the policies interrelate as well. If we're together a little bit earlier on the journey. So just this workshop next year so that we can sort of streamline our, um, policy development.
Thank you, thank you councillor. Anyone else who wants to speak for it or against it?
I'll just make a quick comment. I agree wholeheartedly. I think we should, we've all had a lot of pages to read and I think the more that we're involved from the beginning, I think we'll end up with a better policymaking, um, uh, framework and better outcomes. And I think that we should be leading to a point, I'll say this from now that, we should be trying to collapse our policies as much as possible, you know what I mean? Um, uh, because I tell you what, if you're trying to, if you're, if you're a resident, downloading, what do we have, to 100 policies is a bit, um, a little bit confusing. Um, so that's another thing, but we'll talk about some other time. So I recommend it.
No further discussion. I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, declared unanimous. Next item is corp 03. Uh, investment report, uh, to the October 04, page 119, tab 11, recommendation on page 120. Move deputy mayor, seconded councillor Green in discussion. Put the motion, all those in favour. Against, declared unanimous. Next item is corp 0, uh, 4. Uh, page 129, tab 12, recommendation on page 129, annual financial reports 23, 24.
Got a motion, which I'll get onto the screen. So basically I'm just saying that, um, we get a report. We get a report to come back to the net, well, if not the next one, but the most practical one. On the analysis, how we went from a 2024 financial year budget estimate, 3.7 million deficit, when the actuals came back at about 11. Uh, obviously the new councillors weren't involved in that discussions or, 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 um, around that, uh, item. So it'd be nice to know what, what happened. Um, especially where we're constantly looking at our budget. Um.
Sorry, councillor Ostevsky, the, uh, uh, it, the, are you talking about the 24, 25 financial year?
No, the ones we just, just received.
The 23, 24. Uh, do you have a seconder? Seconding councillor Conyeb. Councillor Hart?
Uh, Mr Mayor, if I may, um, I believe this was a discussion that we had in a councillor briefing session or the governance committee. Can someone confirm that for me?
I'll refer to the, to the CEO. The director of corporate services.
Thank you. Through the chair, just refer to the director of corporate services.
Yeah, through the CEO. Yes, at the governance committee meeting, we provided that ve- very reconciliation from the um, budgeted initial, uh, surplus to the deficit. We provided that the, uh, last reported variances to council at period three, at quarter, the third quarter. Uh, and then at the, uh, fourth quarter being the annual financial reports with that final result. So that has already been, uh, provided, um, uh, at the last governance committee meeting in detail.
Is it available to the public?
Imagine part of the minutes, wouldn't it be? The report would be as part of it.
Yeah, you can, you can make it that way, absolutely.
My whole point was to make it transparent and so the public knows.
Yeah, no, I, I'm pretty sure, can someone pull up the, um, the report please? That was the governance committee report, because that would be online. Mayor is. Thank you. Where is it?
That's the.
Do we have that now? Mm-hmm.
Uh, Mr Mayor, it's in the governance. Mr Mayor, it's in the governance committee meeting agenda, which is publicly available. I can, it's page four, just for your reference councillor Rostewski.
Yep.
Okay, I'll remove that, but I've got a whole bunch of questions if I can ask instead.
So do you want to just move the recommendation then?
Correct.
Okay, so I'll move the recommendation. Councillor Conneeb, happy with that? Yes councillor, Rostewski?
I was hoping we'll get the financial statements, and I noticed the operating results from continuing operations were 35% down, and green contributions were 26% down. One of the explanations in the report was this was due to an increase in employee benefits. What does that actually mean? Does it mean a pay increase? If so, what's the average percent increase, or does it mean an increase in headcount? Thank you, thank you councillor. Through the CEO, I'll just refer to the director of corporate support for a further breakdown of that detail.
Actually, through the CEO, I might like to refer that to the CFO for explanation.
Through the CEO, sorry, can I get the question again, which one you're looking at? This one here is moving from 3.7 to 6.9 as part of the Q3 budget review. This other graph, next one, yes, product. This one is moving from 6.9 to 10.9. So is that 3.5 salary savings you're talking about?
Yeah, so the, there was an explanation in the reports that there was an increase in employee benefits, but I just don't know what that means. That was the result of the operating results were down 35%, and one of the explanations given was that.
I'm not sure which report you're referring to. I'm sorry.
Give me one second. I'll come back to that one. There was another one, council owes 216 million. So it's an increase of 8 million from 2023. What was the 8 million increase about?
Through the CEO, is that the loan?
Correct, yep.
Post $23 million borrowing that we did for the civic place, we did borrow about 20 million for the Carpe Sherwood acquisition. That was the last borrowing.
Also, total cash has dropped by nearly 20% from 2023, which has obviously reduced our unrestricted current ratio benchmark below O L G standards for the first time in five years. Now, what's the reason and what system is in place to ensure that we meet this benchmark in the current financial year?
Through the CEO, I can give you some explanation at a high level, but I think I'll probably take that question on notice to come back with a more comprehensive response. One of the reasons is that we have drawn down loan for the civic place. We are not actually getting any rental income from the property, so we are actually repaying the loan from general reserves, and that's why our cash reserves is below. But I'll come back with a more comprehensive response.
Another one is operating performance ratio is in the negative quite dramatically from the past two years. Once again, what systems in place to ensure that we meet the O L G benchmark for 2025?
Through the CEO, again, we have to take that question on notice. Thank you.
The other one, council didn't meet its debt service cover ratio for the first time in five years. What systems in place to ensure that this is back to standard for 2025?
Sorry, we have to take that question on notice as well.
Excellent. Out of the six ratio benchmarks set by the O L G, councils only managed to achieve two out of six. Now, in particular, rates and annual charges outstanding ratio has been gradually increasing for the past five years instead of improving. Now, obviously, that money's quite critical at the moment, considering that we're at a zero, effectively unrestricted cash reserves, that would come in quite handy. What systems in place to prevent this escalating out of control?
Through the CEO, I'll refer this question to the director of customer and business improvement. Thank you.
Thank you, through the chair. We currently have a programme in place for debt recovery. There'll be a paper that comes to council either in December or early in the year that will talk to it. We have a significant portion of that debt ratio assigned to pensioners, and none of that debt will be recovered or actively recovered at this point in time. The process in place for moving forward is to actively recover other debts. In the next couple of months, we'll actually look at the big people, the big end of town that owes money to council, and we'll be looking at that.
Okay. There was a note of significant events in the financials that the public inquiry will not have an impact on council operations. What impact will it have on the budget? The, thank you councillor for the question. The 438 inquiry will require some cost as it relates to legal advice. We're insured for a majority of that support and advice. Within the legislation, the cost of the 438 can be applied to our own council in the minister's discretion. But that hasn't been forecast at this stage. So we haven't done any modelling on the 438 because of the uncertainties. That is, how long will the 438 take? Where will it take place? The requirement of witnesses and other legal advice, other than the insurance legal advice, is unknown. And the decision to pass on the costs by the commissioner, sorry, by the minister is also unknown. So, yes, there will be a cost to council of being involved in a 438 investigation. And I guess the range of that cost is unknown. And I'd be reluctant to put a finger in the sky on it at the moment. Basically, because it's conditional on duration, I would have thought. Just a few more. There was an internal allocation in 2023 of 525,000 from the Intermodal company, but nothing in 2024. Just an understanding of that. Yeah, so just for the advisor councillors, so more banking and model players, the rates equivalency fee. And I'll just pass that over perhaps to the CFO or the director of community, sorry, director of corporate support.
I think we'd probably take that one on on notice. Yeah, unless the CFO has the details.
So the councillor, you've seen it being paid before, and what you're saying now is it doesn't, is not reflected in the current financials. Yeah, we'll take that on notice and we'll get a better understanding of its cadence. There was a 34% increase in other leave under employee benefit provisions. What is that leave? Is it stress leave, or is it normal annual leave? Is it an increase in stress leave? So I'll refer to, again, the director of corporate support as to what that exactly is. I've got an idea, but I'll reflect back to the director.
I'll refer that to the CFO.
Through the CEO, it's not stress leave. Actually, annual leave, long service leave, any other leave that's in there. And that doesn't include sick leave and flex leave as such. It's impacted by a couple of things, the liability. So at the end of the balance date, we look at what leave is outstanding, that's actually costed. And that is impacted by the number of days that's been accumulated, and also the rate of pay at that point in time. So potentially, those two are the increases.
And just final question, there was 181% variance from the budget to the actuals for borrowing costs because an additional 23 million had to be borrowed for Liverpool Civic Place. It seemed like quite a large variance within a 12-month period, just some understanding behind that as well.
We have to take it on notice, thank you.
I can answer that one. So councillor, if you, in 2021, I think around the month of June or July approximately, council entered into a contract with Built for approximately $150 million for the construction of Civic Place. That's following on agreements that were done prior to that, and reports had come to council. There was a variation of $20 million that was not, that the then CEO did not report to the then council, and I don't think any of us were here, I think maybe councillor. Oh, you're the only person who was there at that time. So we, when we, then the election was held in December. The, we were then told in February that the signing of the lease for Moore Street was imminent for the whole building. Because the financial modelling for Civic Place relied upon 33 Moore Street being fully leased out and this building being fully leased out. It turned out the imminent wasn't imminent after further investigation. And all the modelling showed that this building would be fully tenanted by a certain date, which many of us questioned, and this building had zero pre-commitment to it, which banks would have, if you were a private developer and you went to the bank and said, I want to build this building and borrow a couple of hundred million dollars, and they're going to ask you how you're going to pay for it, we'll say, well, we hope that it'll be rented. You know, the commercial market doesn't work like that. They need at least normally, I'd say, anywhere from a 30 to 50% plus pre-commitment. This building is not, it's not, the borrowing for this building is not a mortgage over this building. It's actually a charge on our rates, and that's why the bank has their fund secured, because they can get straight to our rates if they wanted to. So basically, there being no pre-commitment for this building as was projected at the time, but decisions that were made, I know in 2021, 2022, we had many issues about that, and I won't relive them here, but but now thankfully, the last council meeting, I think of the last term, we did sign a lease. And I'm like, can I get up, has the lease actually been signed yet? No. But we're hoping that the lease will be signed any day now, where you'll have this building fully tenanted. But then also one more question about is, was enough consideration, I don't think enough consideration, the mauling that was presented to councillors considered the incentive periods as well? Because any lease does have that incentive period, as I think we have a report coming to us, or that's before us today, which we have to deal with. So that is also, I think, a challenge that we uncovered as we went through Civic Place and the decisions that were made prior to any of us being here. So hence why there are more borrowings. And then it turned out that specifically, I think it was that 23 or whatever it was, was for the fit-out, because it looked like, once again, the fit-out was not factored when it was presented to the councillors in that 2016 to 2021 term. So there was no fit-out costs included. And that's kind of how we are, got to where we are now, but thankfully, it's now fully, just about fully leased out, and income is projected to come, I think, was it the following financial year? Yeah.
Any further discussion? No, okay, I'll put the motion all, so if we can just go back to the motion, please? So I think we just remove point two and just move back to the recommendation. Yep. I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, declared unanimous. Next item is Corp 05.
Got a motion?
Page 131, tab 313, recognition 131. Public inquiry, yes councillor, what's your motion?
Seeing as though the CEO was talking about some costs, maybe if we can get a report back, not at the next council meeting, but as soon as practical, what this will have on the budget.
Do you have a seconder? Seconding councillor Hart, deputy mayor. Any discussion?
Can I ask a question, please?
Yes councillor Green.
I'm just wondering with the, I take note that regular updates are given to staff, and we've certainly received them as well. But I was curious as to why maybe there was nothing in there about a public interest disclosure? That if people wanted, if staff or people wanted to participate, they also have the right to make a public interest disclosure. So I was wondering why that information had not been provided.
Councillor, thank you for the question. The commissioner himself, Ross Glover, wrote to us last week in relation to our response to telling staff how and what they can do and how they should do it. We've re rejigged our approach and sent out new staff advice as of today, which will go to councils as well. But I will just send that question over to the general council just for a quick comment.
There'll be an updated message going out, councillor.
Yes, councillor McNaul.
No, I just had a question, a suggestion, if the mover and the seconder are okay with that. And I'm more than happy for this report to come back, but also that we do still note the contents of the report, and this is maybe a point two. Just otherwise, we haven't noted the contents of the report.
Just might refer to the director of corporate support for some additional advice.
Through you, the CEO, in regard to the first motion, direct the acting CEO to report back to council as soon as practicable on the estimated cost of the inquiry that we'll have on the budget. Page 133 of your report, under financial implications, actually spelt it all out. Obviously, we are looking seeking insurance. If that is granted, then there is a, through civic risk, there is, we have to pay the first $50,000. Until that's determined and until, I guess this proceeds, I'm not sure if there's any more information we can provide on that. But it is, that is the situation it stands.
Have these numbers already been factored into the current budget, or?
No, it hasn't.
So that's what I'm suggesting, factor them into the budget. Let's see what it looks like.
The $50,000.
And the risk of not getting the insurance as well, maybe a couple of scenarios.
Sorry, so I thought the $50,000 was budgeted, because it would be in legal cost. That doesn't come out of legal cost?
I see, yeah.
No, no, again, a budget is in itself a forecast. And when the budget was originally in play, we weren't before a 438. The question really, councillor, is how long's a piece of string? And there's a whole lot of conditions and that the minister has, and decisions at his discretion in relation to cost. But it looks like we would pay our premium, our insurers would insure us, and we would work with that number. But I think a budget variance of $50,000 would be obviously reasonable now.
Yeah, so I guess once again, like what is point one going to achieve if? Because what's what I'm hearing, is it, how can we estimate anything else in reality? And having it as an educated guess? Because ultimately, if it's a bunch of lawyers doing a bunch of lawyer work, whether internally care for council or whether the public inquiry side, where they try to hit us up and say we have to pay for it, how do we even estimate that?
or whether the public inquiry side, where they try to, where they try to hit us up and say we have to pay for, how do we even estimate that?
What I'm trying to say is, once we know um an estimate a number to let us know straight away and then what impact that'll have on the budget, so I'm not getting anyone to predict, but as soon as we know, let us know as well.
Yeah, but a re- a report back is, it's a saying you're actually asking for something, you mean, to come to come back to us. Yeah, and then either way, when there's a budget variation legally, there has to be reported anyway, so it's just asking them to do what they're gonna do anyway regardless. I'm saying that it's advice, but it's once again, and just uh you you, the staff have to legally, you legally have to report back to to council regardless. So I'm just saying, if you, it's, if we wanna be that prospective, we can be that prospective. I'm saying it's uh, yeah, I know councillor said, do you want them there? Because I said they're gonna, they have, they're legal. Yeah. So do you want to just go, just go, go back to the original motion then? Okay. So go back to the original recommendation. Yep, the received there, whatever.
Just point two.
Yeah, the recom- the recommendation becomes the motion. All right. If there's no further discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare unanimous. Next item is C E B P zero one, customer experience policy, page one thirty five, tab fourteen, with the recommendation on page one thirty five.
Add a motion with a point four?
So you wanna move the recommendation?
Yeah, and just add a point four.
Yes. What's your point four councillor?
Uh do you want me to read it out?
Yeah.
Oh, there it is, yeah. The reason I've raised that is a lot of the times I'm hearing from constituents that we're not providing solutions to a lot of their problems and I think we need to treat our council customer service like a business and offer solutions rather than just constantly no, no, no. Um maybe look at something that's proactive, um offer suggestions.
So just before you speak on your motion, sorry, I don't want to interrupt you councillor, do you have a second or free motion, councillor Monahan? Okay, sorry, please, Rusevsky, councillor Rusevsky, please continue.
And a lot of the time, the caller on the other end would not know what the solution is, so if they can be guided in alternate solutions, considering our customer service staff should know a lot of these. I think adopting a a solutions-based customer service experience is is quite critical. And if we can look at that and come back at a suitable time, remove next council meeting, but at a practical time.
Well, alt, we have a, we have a policy that's going on public exhibition. Um and from my understanding, what you're saying is probably should be part of that policy. I'd probably say versus, I guess there's no point in getting a report when it's or when it's already on exhibition and then have to go back on exhibition again. I might just refer, if I can, to the um CEO for some guidance potentially of better way of doing it.
I take the under, I understand the the context of the question, it's just whether in the review process, could that be one of the contributions from a- anybody, including yourself councillor, but I I just refer generally on the topic, just over to the relevant director.
Thank you, through the chair. Um from a customer service perspective, when we take a call at the call centre, you'll see in the stats that we've been starting to provide to councillors that we have a first call resolution rate of about eighty percent. So eighty percent of the calls that comes through, so we we get anywhere between six hundred and a thousand calls a day, depending on the issue, so eighty percent of those calls are generally resolved uh at first call resolution by the person on the phone. A lot of those are around missed bins. There's a number of other things that the customer so- service agents can respond to and resolve for customers at first call. Those ones that aren't, so that twenty percent are then workflowed to the relevant business areas. And I, we track those and report those with each of the directors. The other program that we've put in place or about to put in place is a program called the Customer Care Program, whereby we'll dedicate customer service officers, most likely the senior ones, to check in with the people who have those requests on a regular basis, most likely every two weeks, to understand where they're at. The major, the, most of the requests we have that linger are ones that are complex. So the planning and development matters are generally the ones that linger because they're complex, but our teams actively and leader teams actively work with the residents on those ones. Um so that, that's where that's sort of, that's where that data's at, and that's the program that we've got in place to actually improve customer, the resolution from that perspective.
So the changes that councillor Rusevsky um is raising in the issues, what is the best way to incorporate that?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I would have thought that council staff would evidence, it's after the, uh there's a, there's a review period now, that council, council staff evidence a solution-based customer service experience by providing detail on a proactive approach, so if if it's put back to us to evidence the fact that it does exist, if if um if the officer's saying greater than eighty percent on first call res, let's have the evidence on that, so yeah, ra- rather than provide a report, the council start evidence, ev- so it's in point four. Down to point four, start up with evidence. Yeah, start the word, e- evidence is the first word, and then a a solution-based customer, so just delete, now you can just delete there from there on. A solution-based customer experience service by uh which provides solutions that involves that acts, that's right, evidence a solution by providing a proactive approach to customers. Uh focusing uh and just rather than focusing on, uh just put the word which, W H I C H, which which demonstra- uh which evidences the following through things.
Through the chair, the other things we've got on in um play in this process, so we have a customer experience transformation program, which has four pillars of activities and actions that we're gonna do to improve engagement, improve uh quality services. The other thing that I've done is we're trialling what's called net promoter score, which is a customer satisfaction survey, so we've done a a trial survey internally, which has three or four questions on a form, that'll be implemented early in the new year, so people who call us will actually get a response email which says, were you satisfied, and will start to track net promoter score in that space. The other thing that I do proactively is spot audits of customer requests. So on a Friday afternoon, I'll give four or five customers a call and say, you raised a request with us, I wanna understand, was it treated well, have you got any feedback for us? So that customer transformation program, which I can brief the councillors on, um update the councillors on, is our act proactive solutions-based program to actually lift customer experience.
So, so can I ask on that then, is that just relating to people who call in through the call centre? Or does it relate to people who might call a a different department, for example, I'm, I I see the director sitting closest to is a maybe when they call planning and deal with planning, how they felt with that, or how they feel when they uh when the, I won't, no, because I'm not gonna pick on planning, how the C, how people feel after they interact with the CFO and they call up with all their financial questions?
Through the chair, at the moment, it will, in the early stages, it'll be just through who calls through the call centre. We'll see how that works and then we'll broaden that out across the organisation based on any potential pain points that we've experienced.
And what about the uh, because I know the people's re- in- interactions with any council staff with, for example, response to emails, because I know we get, we get that, we understand, you know, an email gets sent and we get the call, or we get, because, oh, nobody responded to my email, like other, uh is there clear customer service standards about that? And then how do we monitor that, that it's actually being met?
Through the chair, thank you for that question, Mr Mayor. Uh the standard that accompanies this process, this this policy, which essentially takes some of the metrics from the old policy and puts them in a standard, which is an internal document, did commit us to uh metrics around answering phone calls and responding to correspondence. Those metrics aren't actively tracked at the moment because there's no simple mechanism to do that. So if we wanted to track when we received an email and how quickly it was responded to, we would have to do that manually. And this leads into the P twenty six project where we're talking about data integrity and data capture. If we have improvements in our investment in our I T infrastructure, we'll be able to capture that metrics. At the moment, we don't because it's just too complicated and would take too many resource, too much resource time to do that. This C S A T work that I'm gonna do early in the new year will take us forward, but it won't take us to the end. So there'll be, needs to be more investment from an infrastructure perspective before I can do that.
So councillor, I think the 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 secret's in the first word on point four, we will evidence it during the assessment period.
All right, is everyone happy with that?
And that will, sorry, that will come back to council after the period anyway, after which time, in that period, sorry, of time, we will have had the briefing session, yeah, okay, thank.
All right, if there's no further discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare unanimous. Next item is C E P, C E B P zero two, provisional mail service for council, page one forty five, tab fifteen, recommendation on page one forty five.
Move as per the book.
Move cons, councillor Monahan, second and councillor Green. Any discussion?
I'd like to move a foreshadowed motion.
Yes councillor, what's your foreshadowed motion?
That we we go out to tender this service, just so that we know what's out there.
Do you have a second, er? Second, councillor Moon. That's why it's foreshadowed, it's a different motion. Point one becomes.
Sorry, through the mayor, just the word because, so if 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 the recommendation cites the words after the word because, the advice from council is that we have, there's, it it, there is an unavailability of the very things that the foreshadowed motion is requesting. Uh councillor, you can do anything you want, uh it's just counterintuitive to the the first discussion point. We are saying there are no other uh competitive or reliable tenders that could be achieved by inviting tender, there's no, nobody else is in the same market. There are plenty of people that do this stuff, but not the same market across the width and scope of the L G A, where it 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 treats everybody the same, whether you're from a different culture, an elderly person, anybody can walk into Australia Post.
Are we getting the corporate rates?
Through the chair, um the report talks to a letter costing approximately a dollar fifty per delivery compared to a courier charging twenty five dollars per delivery, so there is a comparable rate in there.
But say, are we getting the corporate rate for Australia Post? Because I know there's, you know, from letter boxing to everything in between, there's different rate schedules, subject to who you are.
Yeah, I have to take that on notice, I can only assume we are.
If we could, okay, I'm happy to, I'm happy uh to withdraw that motion as long as we're certain that we're getting the best deal that we can from Australia Post.
Yep. Can we just make sure we get that information back on on boat? What schedule rates we're getting?
Can, sorry, through the chair, um if one interprets all documents necessary, then you would, you would uh assume that I would get the best value for money from the procurement. Section fifty five doesn't allow us to quote sharpen the pencil. So I, in executing all documents necessary, council can be sure that I will make the investigate and conduct all due diligence to make sure that we're getting the best rate available, if you can interpret point two in that fashion.
Yep. Cool.
Uh Mr Mayor, I've got a question. Um do we have a breakdown um of how many um uh households receive their rates through the mail as opposed to paperless?
Through the chair, yes, uh and I'll refer to the director.
Through the chair, at the moment, there's approximately thirty percent, thirty two percent of the rate base that go E rates. We have put notices in um pamphlets in the last round, note the the annual rates notice that went out earlier in the year to actively encourage people to take on the E rates notices. What we have found anecdotally though is um people who get E rate notices actually more tardy in payment because the rates notice is not sitting on the fridge. So, but we do actively encourage people to um take up the E rates notices. I also have some advice from my rates person who's messaging me right now, um we actually get bulk discounts from Australia Post.
Good, thank you. Councillor AJ?
Yeah, um thank you so much, um chair and also the customer service manager. Um just talking about rate, when somebody purchases a new house, that, does it get notified or change your over straight away? Or what's the process? Because my neighbour was asking me um that he just bought a house and he doesn't know the process.
Thank you, thank you councillor for the question. On transfer of title, the rates are aggregated from the point of the date of exchange. So on the day you own the house, your rates are then apportioned for that part of the month and then moving forward only from the date of first occupancy or first ownership.
Uh Mr Mayor, I've got another question. Um uh eh do, does council do anything to encourage direct debit or um zero transaction fee payments for um rate notices?
So I think that most probably relates to. No, I'm not asking a question, I think we, I think, sorry, through the chair, I think councillor Hart was referring to the next item of business, not this item of business. I'm not sure there's any more discussion for this one.
Any further discussion on the matter? If not, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands, against, declare unanimous. Next item is C E B P zero three, provision of Australia Post bill pay service, page one forty eight, tab sixteen, recommendation on page one forty eight.
Got a couple of questions, is, is there anything preventing us from using our own libraries where people come in and pay their rates instead of Australia Post? Um it seems like quite a um large amount, could we maybe do it that way? Is there anything preventing us to look at that option?
Just before we go, anyone ask any question, do we have a motion that somebody would like to move? Move councillor Green, second and deputy mayor. Now, would you like to speak for your motion, take that as a no? Councillor Rusevsky had a question. I'll now go to, thank you.
Thank you for the chair. Um obviously, we're moving away from cashing transit and exposure to that risk, but I'll refer the matter to the director.
Thank you, through the chair. We have a number of methods of payment for bills, we do actually accept over the counter payments through F post at our Cannes Hill facility, which is in the, our Cannes Hill customer service hub, which is at the library. And we've recently opened the Moorbank customer service hub at the Moorbank library. We currently take cash at Yala Mandy as well as electronic payments. We are moving to cashless from the first of July though, at that, at that library. Um from a security perspective, it's more, it's a security issue taking cash there. We are getting dwindling amounts of cash through that centre, uh through the centre. Um so Australia Post is the place to actually pay cash, and there's more Australia Post outlets around than we do for customer service hubs.
Councillor Moon?
Through the CEO, has that been communicated out to the commute, to to the residents? Because I've actually had calls where people say, I don't know where to go and pay apart from Australia Post. So they don't know that we take the cash or the F pos at our facilities. Can that go on like all the groups, the community groups, can we, can we make it public?
The answer to your question councillor is yes, it is communicated. The extent to which we incorporate all the community groups via Facebook, I assume by social media, we can have a look to make sure we're covering all those community groups.
Sorry, microphone please councillor.
I'm actually on a few of those and I haven't seen it. So yeah, if that's, please, that'll be great.
Through the chair, in the rates notice that went out, the first one that went out for the financial year, there was a flyer that talked about the cashless, but also talked about the places that you can actually pay. We can improve that communication and start to put that out on socials when the next rate instalment's due, so happy to do that.
As a rate payer, normally I'll just look at the bill and have a heart attack. I don't bother about the rest of the stuff. So if you put it out on Facebook, community pages and stuff like that.
Your rates, your rates are low man, why shouldn't be having a heart attack?
Mate, I've got a family.
Can I just ask a question please? I just wondered, and it may be, it may be in the report and I've missed it, but what percentage of people pay their rates at Australia Post?
Through the chair, through, in, from July to September this year, we had twelve thousand payments totaling about nine million dollars. So last financial year, we had thirty eight thousand payments equating to about twenty million dollars.
Microphone please.
Yeah, those are not individual rate payers though, are they? They could be people paying instalments and so they could be return customers going through Bpay and not just, sorry, post bill pay and not necessarily just paying rates, is that correct?
The July to September one for twelve thousand would be rate payments. So it would have been their first instalment or their entire instalment, depending on how they paid. Sorry, their first instalment or their entire rate notice, depending on how they paid. So I could have paid a quarter or I could have paid the whole year. Approximately eighty thousand.
If there's no further discussion, I will put the motion all those in favour, against, I declare unanimous. Next item is C E B P zero four, page one fifty one seventeen, recommendation on page one fifty one, amendment to non-voting membership of the Council of the Audit Risk Improvement Committee. Move councillor Kynib. Do you have a second there? Second councillor Rusevsky, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare unanimous.
Through the chair, when you're ready, through the chair, I appreciate the opportunity to reconfeit the agenda for the rest of the meeting, noting there's only about twenty seven minutes to deal with a particular issue that I would determine as urgent being the notice of motion I put up about mosquitoes and the urgent attention that that may require.
What's that? Ah, yeah, sorry, before we get to that, I'll get, I'll get back to you in a second. So we have to determine who the member is, onto that. Onto, onto Eric.
I'm happy to nominate councillor Rusevsky.
You accept the nomination councillor? Are there any other nominations? Nope, all right, so councillor Rusevsky. Which ones, all right, so councillor Kynib, yes, I understand, well, if you can just hold off on that for a moment, because there are some that have some very significant financial implications that we need to get to first.
As long as we can get to that today.
If we can move, we can move, but yes, we've got to get to, there are, it's important, but there's one that's quite financially important to us. So can I recommend that we move, I'm going to go a bit backwards here, confidential addendum book five, which is conf zero eight, which is regarding a lease agreement for Civic Place, which is page one thousand one hundred and eighty eight in addendum book five, with the recommendation on page one thousand one hundred and eighty nine. And there is an updated motion with a point five, that the funds for the subject fit out incentive in the report be financed through general funds. Do we have a mover for this motion? It's conf zero eight. Any movers?
I mean, yes, definitely needs to be fitted out, but how are we going to do that through general funds considering the situation we find ourselves in? A little bit of explanation would be great.
I'll refer to the CEO.
Thank you, through the chair, my question exactly, we just discussed that. It'd be a budget variation, but I'll pass it over to the director of corporate support.
Again councillors, it's a matter of our cash, it's not the result, it's a matter of getting cash through the door. And whilst I said that we had, after external and internal restrictions, we had no excess general funds. That was at balance state thirtieth of June and at September. But moving forward, we expect revenues coming in that will, that will generate surplus over, over the external and internal restrictions. So what this motion will do will be to identify that three million dollars as another budget variation in terms of cash, and we'll be working on getting the funds through the door that I mentioned earlier, particularly with receivables and other debt that's owed to us to finance that. And we'll report on that on a monthly basis as we update the councillors of our financial progress.
So rather than taking it from general reserves, is there any other areas that maybe we can look at reducing? I've noticed we spend millions on festivals. Considering the situation we find ourselves in, I don't think that's appropriate. Maybe we need to look at that area to reduce it and put some money into this.
Through you CEO, that's absolutely correct councillor. What we will be doing, as I said, on a monthly basis is coming back to council, reporting on variations to this current budget as well as preparing for next year's budget. In the process of doing that, we will be going through all of the activities of council in terms of what the revenues are, what the expenses are, what the net costs of those services are, whether we should be providing the service, whether we should be providing it to the extent that we do. And you will be able to make variations or make adjustments to the existing budget in order to finance other things, should that be the decision of the council.
And just finally, are we confident in that three million dollar number?
Councillor, I just caution you to go into detail because we haven't gone in camera. The transaction is a transaction in progress, but the answer to your question is yes, it's in the report.
Through the chair, I've just got a question, how does this compare to the other commercial agreement specific place? Like I know we've got University of Wollongong and St George Community Housing.
We don't need to go on to confidential subject to help people talk about, and the questions. Yeah, please don't be too specific councillors. My apologies.
The answer to the question is very well.
We'll ever that.
And CEO, there is a table here on page one one nine two, which compares relative returns on other properties in the West and South West, so you can see the figure there.
The, so just, we still don't have a mover or a second there, my apologies. Move deputy mayor, second councillor Green. Yeah. Just with, with regards to your, your comment councillor Rusevsky, just, I'm just clear in my mind. So you were saying that we should, did you want to cancel one event or all the events to help pay for the fit out?
Is this something I can bring up here or is this?
You brought it up.
Well, we probably need to come back with a report on what we're spending on festivals, a P and L on each one. And if you can add that as a, as an item.
We've already, we've already done that today.
Okay, question we noticed, yeah. Okay, well, I'd like to sort of, I haven't had a chance to see which ones, but I think that's the area we need to be targeting because we can't go into further deficit. This is actually an investment for the rate payers where they're going to get a very good return on their investment. While festivals are great, but you can't be holding parties when you've got no money.
So, yeah, so the forty thousand to sixty thousand people who come to events for our community shouldn't come, shouldn't come anymore?
I actually would like to know how those numbers are determined.
I can answer that for you councillor, it's done through mobile phones. There's a company that actually collects the data for us based upon the amount of wifi and mobile phone signals in the area.
Well, what about the cost to influencers and there's, there's an item. I know, but we're talking about it now and he wants to debate the issue. So we can have that debate about this one or we can go to the questions we've noticed. Maybe I could defer that part to the questions we noticed.
Yeah, we can get to that and just be mindful, because ultimately the, those events take significant amounts of planning and lots of work and effort and they're award winning. So if you're implying that they're not good and they shouldn't be there and we should use the money for a fit out, that's quite a significant strategic change of direction for Liverpool council. And you mentioned it and I just, I think it's important that we reassure staff, the organisation and the tens of thousands of people in our community that council does commit to those.
I think they're more concerned about our financial situation than festivals, I can tell you that.
Do you have any evidence of that?
I can show you all my emails, voicemail messages, text messages.
Happy to, if you were, happy if you can provide them on, put them on notice, we're happy to, if you can send them through. Does it outweigh the sixty thousand people who turned up to the event?
Well, when you're in a situation where we've got zero funds in unrestricted cash reserves, we need to be financially prudent, especially when we've got a public inquiry looking at whether the councillors are acting in a capacity to do so. I think we need to be, factor that into play rather than focusing on festivals. We need to pick out the ones that are profitable or near profitable. There's one here that I noticed that was over a million dollars in a loss. We can't be doing those things at the moment, we don't have the money.
So does that apply to the Casula powerhouse as well? The Casula powerhouse costs around anywhere from three to five million dollars, subject to how you deal with depreciation.
Because the Casula powerhouse is a fixed fixture, permanent fixture of Liverpool. These are other discretionary festivals, a lot of them, in my opinion, this is only my opinion, probably verge on electioneering, especially just before the last council meeting, sorry, the last council election.
Yes councillor, what's your point of order?
How does that go into electioneering?
I think it's, yeah, valid, these are resolved events of council with a calendar.
Correct, there was one on the election eve, the timing of them, paying, you've got here tens of thousands of dollars on influences, which, you know, there's a motion which councillor Kynib's bringing up about mosquitoes and we don't have the money for that, but we've got money for influences. Honestly, I, I think we've gone mad by focusing on festivals when the situation we find ourselves in.
So you don't want to promote the events?
I want to be financially prudent.
But I'm saying if you, yeah, so if you're having an event, you don't want to promote it.
We've got to look at the P and Ls, let's see if it makes sense, we've got to act as if you're spending your own money, not rate payer's money.
Council's not a business, doesn't run, it doesn't run events to make money, it doesn't run childcare to make money, we lose money on childcare.
I disagree on that one.
No, we actually lose money on childcare.
If you factor in an overhead, a corporate overhead, you take that out, we do make money.
Not really, no we don't, we actually don't. So, so we don't, we don't make money on childcare, but we're not running, we're not running them as a business, we're not here to be a business. We're here to provide services to the community and we collect rates from numerous people in the city centre. You put forward a motion on the agenda that talks about, and we had Farley here, Sulevsky, there's a member of the Chamber of Commerce saying, we need to get more people into the CBD, so let's reduce our parking costs. This brings by far more than anyone else, anything else in the city centre. And I don't, I don't, I'd say that, you know, if you want to say, get forty thousand people out of the city centre so we can have, what, try to get, try to get a hundred people to come out after four PM? Anyway.
We do invest a lot of money on Macquarie Street, my motion talked specifically about George Street.
Yeah, no, no problems. So let's just flag it out for the community that, just make sure you tell them that you want to cancel the events. That's, if that's what, if that's what you're saying.
No, I'm not saying that, I'm saying that we need to find savings and if we have to find them in various departments, we will find them.
Okay, well then that's a different statement to what you said and saying get rid of events to fund this fit out. Right, so use money, use money from events to fund Civic Place.
An event that costs a million dollars in the red.
They don't make money these events.
Yes, well, I'm not comfortable with spending a million dollars of rate payer's money on a, on single festival when we are struggling to, you know, basically have a positive cash balance.
Yeah, but then when you have a report that says you've got twenty five million dollars coming to local economy because of the events, on what basis? I'm sure whether this.
To the mayor, can I say something? I, I think, look, we all live in Liverpool, I live in Liverpool for the past twenty eight years and to be honest, without this event before, you look, walk around, it's like a dead place. Like the mall looks like there's nobody lives in here. Since the festival was coming to Liverpool, you can see live, people are happy, businesses are happy. So as an organisation, we have to look at other revenues to create income for the organisation. This event is helping a lot of local businesses in the mall. Even down the road, like my sister got a shop there and they're all praising the event because people are coming into Liverpool.
Sorry, and just when you say sister, not your blood sister?
No, 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 black sister, yes, African sister, okay. So basically, we need to look at other revenue, we tax the CEO, the staff, the people in charge. If Liverpool go other way to generate income, instead of looking at event that is making the community happy to cancel, what, I don't think it will be fair on the people. So we can debate it and say, oh, this is costing us, that's costing us. There is other ways that I think we can generate income and if we tax the CEO to do that or the staff to come up with what we have as a Liverpool council and where we can get other revenues. But I think the event should stay, that it brings happiness to the people.
Yeah, thank you, all right.
A point of audit, just, and I'm really apologising having to say those words, but I appreciate what's being said, but this has got nothing to do with actually what this motion is before us.
I agree with you.
Can we please put this to the vote on the floor, please?
Yes, I agree with your point councillor and just that the, I agree with your point in my speech afterwards. All right, we'll now put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare it carried. We have to deal with conf zero one and conf zero two as extremely urgent matters. Conf zero one, if I move that we go to, it's confidential book three, proposed acquisition, page seven hundred and forty six for some road land in Austro. Now, unless, it depends if someone's happy to move the motion. Move deputy mayor, second councillor Moon, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare it carried. Next item is conf zero two, proposed acquisition, page seventy, seven fifty two, recommendation on page seven hundred and fifty three. Move councillor Monahan, second councillor Green, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, declare it carried. And I think we just have to do, is it the, there is the annual report? I think is that, is that it? The annual, so CFD zero one? Page one sixty nine, tab eighteen. Page CFD zero one, the annual report, one sixty nine, tab eighteen, or one sixty nine. Yes councillor CFC, what's your motion? Yes councillor CFC, what's your motion?
Just wait for them to put up on the screen. One, adopting and endorse the annual reports. Oh, there it is, yeah. So basically similar, my point two, similar what the ATA do. I've noticed we've got in the report a table on how the rates are used, it'd be good for rate payers to get that on the back of their council rate notice, excellent idea what the ATA do, we should follow the move of that. And also look at gross debt of previous years, we want to increase transparency. So rate payers know exactly where their money is, so they're not always asking us, what do you do with our rates? And there was a report in there and some roads that are rated number five, but it didn't give us a detail on what roads they were. So I'd like to, if we can get a report, maybe in our next council meeting, whenever practical, what those roads are scoring a level of number five.
So just with regards to the road report, now we had this discussion in the last term of council, my understanding it's a, to do a surface report on the roads. It was a, I remember it was 18 month process if you remember councillor Moon, which we never, didn't necessarily agree with it. Can we just get an update on when that is or what's going on, when we're going to get that status report?
Thank you, through the chair, we'll take that on notice and we'll get that detail to council.
Can I ask a question also, sorry.
So just before you get there, we need to get a seconder for this, but I think you'd have to change point three. So second councillor Monahan, we have to get to a point three which would say, report to come back where practical? When practical? The line above point three is a statement, not an action. So I think, if we can relax. Yeah. So you do, the, so if you can get rid of that one, this is to increase transparency, how spend this rate money? You can incorporate that differently if maybe. So if we can get rid of that, if we can make the rates also include information level of gross debt in the current and previous years, if you make that point three please. And you can add on to the end of that, previous years after that, to increase transparency. If you just, so fix up that, one, two. Councillor Rusevsky, are you grunted with that motion? Councillor McNaught, question?
I just wondered while we're getting a report into the poor rating of the roads, if we could get an update in the technology that we spoke about a long time ago? The camera technology that was going to be trialled in the garbage trucks or something? If we could get an update on that as well?
Thank you councillor, that would be the Black Moth Diagnostics Artificial Intelligence Project. I will get a update for you.
Did you want to add that as a point?
If we can incorporate that into point four.
Yep. And get a report on the Black Moth programme. Right? Yep. Thank you. Is the mover and seconder happy with that? Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, declare it carried. The last one we need to do before we get, there's two more, one is councillor Kynheeb's. Operation 02, Brickmaker's Streak at Spansion Project Site, page 176, tab 20, with the record on page 172. Move councillor AJ, is there a seconder? Second councillor Monahan, any discussion?
Yes, sorry, very quickly, this is the, sorry, CFD 02, yes?
We did the annual report, now we're going to Operation 02. Any discussion? Oh, sorry. So move councillor AJ, second councillor Monahan, this one? No discussion, I'll put the motion. All those in favour, against, declare unanimous. Oh. Councillor Kynheeb?
Do we have to do, sorry, CFD 02 in association with CFC 01?
Where is CFD 02?
The reports that are in conjunction with each other? Sorry? CFD 02, the State of Our City Report?
Wait, where is that? CFD, CFD 02.
Yes.
State of Our City Report, amend on book four. Page 1056, recommendation page 1057.
I'm happy to move the recommendation, but I have a.
Can you do it quickly please?
Yes, very quickly. I understand that this needs to come within five, this report needs to be within five months of the council or the end of financial year or something, and we're right on that cusp of five months, if we could get them earlier in future. Thank you.
Okay, move councillor McNaught, second councillor Green, any discussion? Put the motion, all those in favour. Against, declare it unanimous. So next one we'll jump to is NOM 05, mosquitoes, page 243, recommendation 234. Councillor Kynheeb?
Yes, thank you, through the chair, Mr Mayor, there is a part, point five of the motion that I would like to amend, and that is and allocate, it's literally just the wording, and allocate 50,000 from Liverpool council general funds to run such a plan per year.
Yep, do you have a seconder? Second councillor Monahan, any discussion?
The only thing is, I'm happy for five to include 50,000 depending on need. So if only 30,000 is required, then that's fine. Total budget 50,000, depending on need, if it's determined that 40,000 is required, yeah.
Alright, if there's no further discussion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, declare it carried. I'm informed that corp 06?
I'm trying to find it on my sheet. Corp 06. Corp 6? No, corp 6 is in the addendum book four.
Book four. Ah, corp 06, the quarterly budget review, page 1029, recommendation 1031. Do we have a mover? Do we have to do it? Huh? What's the timing on it?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, if we don't approve this now, the variations can't go through.
So I'm, anyway councillor, I'm proposing we come back, I think it was next Tuesday, right? But if we, if we don't deal with this, then we'll have to come back tomorrow, if there's, because it's a timing issue.
Yes, let's move it and.
Alright, move councillor Monahan, do we have a seconder? Councillor McNaught? Any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, declare it carried. Being mindful of the time, I would like to move that this, the council go into recess until Tuesday 12pm.
Yeah. Just on the short notice of the issue of the timing, that time simply doesn't work for, I know myself. I'd appreciate if the council would accommodate a 6pm start.
Yeah, I'll be in Newcastle as well.
Is everyone, what's everyone's like for 6pm?
Tuesday the 26th.
Yeah. 6pm? Alright, we'll do Tuesday, Tuesday the 26th of November at 6pm. Over here. Great, thank you. And I declare the meeting adjourned till then, thank you.